Are beyond our control. Whatever issue was with the recording has now been resolved, so we are recording. I would like to reach out to Councilmember Vaughn, though, and make sure that, you know, and see if we can facilitate her entry into the meeting, and also make sure that Mr. Harrison as well. If you can just give me a minute to reach out to both of them.
Because they never, they never texted me to say that they were having a problem. They might just not be on yet.
Okay, I want, I do want to let know real quick, though, that there is a potential problem. This way, if they do have a problem, they can call the clerk's office and let me know.
Right, I'll let them know.
Okay.
There was a problem because it took me about 10 minutes to get in.
Yeah, and it looks like, sorry, sir.
All righty, so listen, what we're gonna do is we're gonna continue with the, with the budget hearings and the adoption part of it. And when Councilwoman Vaughn and Councilman Harrison tries to come on, if they have a problem, I will let them know to Mr. Collin. We'll have already texted him Mr. Rivera's number. Thank you, let's continue.
Very good, ma'am. We first have the public hearing and presentation of the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Madam, would you like to hear a presentation from Mr. Cruz on the changes before opening up the public hearing?
Yes, I would. I would like for Mr. Cruz to basically talk about the changes that we received at 4:49 this evening, not having a chance to review those latest changes. We need to be able to discuss them now.
Mr. Cruz, before we proceed, can you give a brief synopsis to the council on the changes before we actually open up the public hearing for a formal public hearing?
I count, give me one second, Mr. Clerk. Now, yesterday, I read all of the changes that were taking place in accordance to the, to the hearing that we had at, at DCA and, I mean, on Tuesday. And, and Council President, do you want to hear what was that change at, at 4:49 this afternoon?
Yes, I wanted to know what the changes were today. And I also wanted to talk about the latest changes in the, in the police department, too.
Okay, so Madam President, well, okay, so good evening, everyone. Adam Cruz, this is Administrator, Councilmembers and members of the public. The changes that-
There's a conversation going on.
I got it, ma'am. It takes me a minute to find it, but I got it, ma'am.
So to address the question that Madam President has regarding changes that occur this afternoon, Madam President, those were not actual changes at 4:49 this afternoon. It was actually the, a portion of the file that was sent to you earlier. Inadvertently, the piece for police was actually omitted from the one- I originally sent the, all of the departments, believing that police was also in there. Before we, we left the office, I was informed that police was not in there. So I just, we just went back and sent it to you. But there are no new changes to that. Now, the changes that were made and are reflecting on the resolution to adopt the budget, the one change that was made yesterday at the, at 12:33 in the afternoon yesterday by, as a request by the Department of Community Affairs, is actually a, a budget change in the police department, where the police depart, where the police department was being deducted about $508,000 for operating expenses. That, that call from the DCA, during that call, DCA advised us that we needed to put the money back in, in police because there were already certification of fundings and approvals that had been done prior to the budget hearing at DCA two weeks ago. And so the money had to be placed back on the budget. So rather than having a $1.3 million cut in police, it was, it ended up, we ended up putting the $507,000 back in the budget, and we, the other 800 and change remained. I believe Mr. Collin just had it highlighted just a few minutes, seconds ago. So that one-
That was salary and wages that he had.
Yes, so salaries and wages remains the same as, as when we spoke on Tuesday. And, and the only other one was putting back the $507,000 into the introduced budget.
So there was no change? This is Ron Zelinski, there was, ended up being no change in the police OE budget?
Right.
Okay, so when, when we talk about putting it back, could you tell me where you got the money from? Where did you make the transfers from?
Oh, sure. So, Madam President, the, the money came from the, from funding in the delinquent taxes line. And we, we, we got $347,525 from the delinquent taxes. And then we got the remainder from the workers' compensation. Mr. Collin, do you have the, excuse me, do you have the latest I sent to council this morning at the request of councilmember for me to add police and fire? On the email itself, I believe, on the body of the email, I, I, I explained, you know, where the, the money was coming from.
Give me one second to pull that email.
Yeah, thank you. So, so Madam President, so it was $347,525 from delinquent taxes and about 100 and, about 100 and change from the workers' compensation. And those two items had to be approved by DCA yesterday as well, before, because we needed to identify the change. And DCA returned to us around four something, I mean, three something, and said, yes, you can proceed, it's approved. So the two, the two amounts were, were approved by DCA. And what Mr. Collin is showing on the emails is actually the explanation of the, of that move.
All righty.
Council President, would you, would you like me to open up the public hearing for council to ask the directors the questions and-
Well, if, if there was nothing else that Mr. Cruz needed to add to this before the public chimed in?
Well, it would be your portion first and then the public's portion. It's an entire public hearing, so you get asked your questions and then the public gets to make their comments.
Right, but I wanted to know if Mr. Cruz wanted to discuss anything else in the budget before the public chimed in? Mr. Cruz-
No, Madam President. Other than what was discussed Tuesday and the change today, that, that pretty much is, is it. Thank you.
All righty. Okay, now we can open up to the public, Mr. Collin.
I now declare open a public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 budget approval before the public speaks. I'm gonna give the council a chance to ask any further questions that they have with regard to the line item budget or any changes. And then we will open it up for a public portion of the public hearing. So actually, council, this is your, this is a time for you to ask some questions as well during the public hearing, and then we can open it up to the public.
Okay. Yes, does any of my colleagues have any questions at this time for some of the changes and some of the questions that were submitted to the law department? Is there any questions from the council at this time? Okay, so-
And we can always go back and you can always ask before you actually vote on the resolution. Council President, would you like me to open up the floor to the public?
Yes, go right ahead.
Members of the public wishing to be heard for the 2021 fiscal year Trenton budget amendment and adoption, please either raise your hand or speak up to be heard. Does anybody wish to be recognized for the public hearing for the 2021 fiscal year budget?
If they're on the phone, they use the star plus six?
Yes, ma'am. If they're on the phone, you would dial star six to be able to unmute yourself. If you're on a device, you can unmute yourself by hitting the spacebar or hitting the small microphone. Once again, this is through the fiscal year 2021 public hearing for the adoption and, or the amendment and the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. I do want to note one thing for the record. The amendment to the budget was by the DLGS director. Accordingly, it abated the advertisement requirements. We are gonna publish the budget in its final form after this meeting. But because the budget was directly amended by the director of the Division of Local Government Services, there was no advertisement per, per, per the rule. And I mean, myself and Mr. Cruz and Mr. Zelinski discussed that in depth. Accordingly, once again, members of the public, this is your time to speak with regard to the adoption, the amendment and adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Does, do any members of the public wish to be recognized? Council President, I do not, anybody wish to be recognized? Would you like to give-
All righty, so I would like to put a couple of questions out to Mr. Cruz and to Mr. Zelinski.
Before that, should we close, can we close public portion?
Yes, definitely.
Uh, this is a closing, this is to close the public portion of the public hearing. So I have a motion to close the public portion.
Some of us.
I motion my council vice president, Colville Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Councilmember Blakely. I'll call the roll on this because this is a budget item. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Colville Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison, have you arrived, sir? Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Roderickus?
Yes.
Council President Vaughn, have you arrived, ma'am? Council President McBride?
Yes.
Okay, public portion is closed. Council President, please proceed.
Yes, so my question is in reference to, well, I did get clarity on one thing and one question that I had, and that was based on the fact that the amendments were coming from DCA, that, and because the Department of Local Government has the right to amend our budget, so it would not be, it, we will not be penalized for not seeing the actual, the actual cuts in the certain departments. Because my concern on Tuesday was that we did not get a breakdown of where the cuts were coming from line by line. For example, if they cut, just say they cut the 880,000 from the police, I wanted to see exactly where those cuts came from. And so, because this was done by the Department of Local Government, and they have a right to insert the, to make the amendments, and so I guess, you know, they're the law, they have the final say. But I still had a problem with not seeing the actual breakdown of where those funds were taken from, that when the department overall budget was reduced. And the second thing was I had sent over a couple of questions to the law department because I was concerned about the administration going into the water department and extracting the million dollars without coming before the body to do that. That was, and that's still a concern of mine. And then the third concern was the infusion of the $3 million to the workman compensation. And I, I had noted on Tuesday that, well, let me stick to the infusion. When, we were never given any type of memos to say that there were workmen comps coming into this city of that magnitude. And so when you infuse the workman compensation for $3 million with three months left, that says that we will be going through a million dollars per month. And to me, that is extreme. Something is seriously wrong with that picture. A million dollars a month for workman compensation is extreme, in my opinion. So I had a problem with that. And then the, the last thing that I, I think that I spoke to was that, it escapes me now, but I didn't write it down. But the, I would have to go back into my phone to pull it up. But the, the other piece that I felt like the administration should have addressed was that when, when they took the funding from the police and they wiped out the, well, reduced the Recreation Department and the Culture Department, but they allow, they, we've been addressed the council's office, the whole nine. But the mayor's office was not touched. You know, like, there are so many important departments here, and for the mayor to have eight to nine aides and none of that was touched during this, during this budget, it's, it's just a bit much for me. You infuse the workman compensation with $3 million, you take a million from the water department without coming to the council, and then you do not cut the mayor's, the mayor's budget nearly, I think you might have took, taken basically $20,000 or $30,000 out of the mayor's department. And so to me, that's a problem. And so today, we do have an opportunity to adjust those things, and I think that those are some of the things that we could talk about. And that's all I had to add to that, to this conversation. Councilwoman Vaughn has joined us. Is Councilman Harrison on the line?
Councilman Harrison has not yet tried to log in. He let IT know that he was not having problems. He has a, he is on his way.
All right.
Hopefully he is here.
I've noted that for the record, sir, thank you.
Thanks. All righty.
Councilmember Vaughn, you are here. Councilmember Vaughn, just to catch you up, we are in the middle of the public hearing for the, for the budget.
Okay. Um, question, Mr., Council, Council President? Okay, I'll wait for my-
Go right ahead, I, I have completed-
Yeah, I just want to, of course, I have, I had outlined my concerns or I had questioned the administration regarding a few line items on Tuesday, last meeting. Number one was the Police Department budget cut and also the Parks and Recreation, and also Economic Development and Housing inspections under Ben Delisle. So I, I find that those three critical inputs are key to economic development. Everybody wants to see a safe city. No one's gonna come here and open a business or raise a family if, if, if they can't be safe. And shootings are going on at random. Parks and Recreation is a critical, and culture is a critical process as well in, in any municipality. And it, and that also plays a major role in attracting economic development to our city. And of course, lastly, as we know, we have a crisis with vacant housing and, and foreclosures, foreclosures and high property taxes. People are vacating their homes and moving away, moving out for various reasons. Taxes are very high, affordability. So these are the concerns, and it's just not rational to think that we can move forward and achieve a fiscal, a fiscal healthy budget and economy with the, with this type of budget and with this type of mismanagement of, of, of public funds, taxpayer dollars. As I said on Tuesday, I'm just insulted and disgusted that the state came in and did what they did with, with, with no indication given to the council from the appointed officials that we gave our vote to, to help manage our, our departments and our services. So this budget, I, I have serious concerns about it, and I'm very reluctant. I, I didn't accept it, I didn't vote for to accept it because the mayor was so late in delivering it. And, and at this juncture, based on how it was managed to date, I'm, I'm, I'm very reluctant to support it at, at any time or vote, or, or, or apply my approval to it. I, oh, and one other concern that I have was the water utility. All our utilities in any municipality are also critical to generating revenues and ensuring that we have appropriate funding to cover our budget through our utilities generate surplus for that purpose. And that's the law. This is not made up. This is defined across every municipality that has a parking utility, that has a water utility, water and sewer utility, and also, yeah, parking, sewer and, and, and water. So those are utilities that most, many, most municipalities have. And under the law, they generate revenues, they're self-liquidating. They generate fees, their operating costs are covered by fees. And any, if they remain self-liquidating and well-managed, those revenues cover the operating expenses of those utilities. And hence, any surplus at the end of any year that the council, with inputs from its tax, can use that money to, to cover shortfalls in the budget. And as you can see, that we have major shortfalls in our budget, and we're suffering major cuts across all departments and services, and to the point where that our city cannot function or deliver the services to 84, to a population of 84,000. We were already operating bare bones coming into fiscal 21, fiscal year 21, and we continue to do so. So to endure these type of cuts is just, is just unconscionable. So we need to really, the council really need to take a step back and really see what our options are here. Because we cannot allow the City of Trenton to move forward in this manner with a budget that, that doesn't even pretend to, to allow us to deliver the services to our community that, that's required under the law. So municipalities are supposed, cities are supposed to be functional and liquid enough to be able to provide services. We collect taxpayer money, although we're keeping them flat this, this year, but the, but the taxes have been increased, increased, we've seen very high increases in our, percentage-wise, in our taxes. So the City of Trenton residents deserve better than this, and we deserve to have adequate levels of services. And this budget does not allow for that. And that's very concerning. And Council President, I just yield my time right now, and I just want to make sure that Mr. DeHulk, the Water Law Attorney, is on tonight. I had asked Mr. Bridges that, that, to make that happen and to invite, invite Mr. DeHulk so he can give the council and the public an education on the importance of utilities and their surpluses and what their uses are for, and who has the authority to determine when to use them and what to use them for. And that's all I have to say. So let's move forward and see what we can do to reach some level of agreement going forward and, and some action items coming out of this meeting as to next steps. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, so tonight is basically a vote to approve this budget. And so, Mr. Collin, before we go any further, I just want you to know, I want to put on the record about the, the public being able to get into this meeting. There is still an issue here. A lot of the public, they are texting me and emailing me. They're trying to get on this, into this meeting with no success. And I believe Councilman Blakely has been locked out again.
He's here, Max Leal.
No, he's here.
Are you on? Okay, you're on, okay.
I am.
The issue seems to concentrate on the phone lines. I have actually resent out the link to the public, to all people on the agenda list and advised them that there is an issue to download the Teams app and to please keep trying to get into the meeting.
All righty, all righty, we may continue.
That's what I was doing in the background, ma'am.
Okay.
Do any of the council members wish to be heard for the public hearing? This is for the public hearing for the amendment and adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget.
And so, so, Mr. Zelinski, the one question that I think that you should answer is the, the reason that the administration did not come to the council for the approval of the million dollars out of our surplus. And I do understand and I do recognize that tonight, we can shut that down. But if we shut it down, where would we get that million dollars from? And so my question to you, Mr. Zelinski, is, why didn't you come to the council before you moved forward with going to, to that surplus?
Again, that was a director from the local government. Actually, it ended up being $2 million, not $1 million.
So, but you can't keep saying that it came from the local government because the local government doesn't have the authority over the Trenton Water Works.
Yes, they do.
The Water Works is not under the MOU, Mr. Zelinski.
They have, they have authority- They have authority to approve all the municipal budgets, including the water utility.
They, they-
And that was one of the conditions that we had to fulfill to allow us to adopt this budget.
No, 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 no. They don't have, they cannot take the, any money out of the water department without coming to the Board of Directors, which is the council. And I, I would like for the, for the law department to chime in here and help me out with this, if, if Mr. Zelinski is correct or not. Mr. Bridges?
I'm here.
Yes.
I, I, I spoke with Mr. Zelinski about this earlier today, and, and we spoke as well. Mr. Zelinski, if you could explain that, that process and, and how the DCA has to approve the budget and thereby they have oversight over what goes on with the city's budget?
Oversight on the budget, but they do not, they do not have the authority to, you serve the council as far as getting and getting money from that water company.
They, go ahead.
They, they should have, as you should have, Mr. Zelinski and Mr. Cruz, come to the, come to the council to, to, to get okay, to get an okay on that money. Now-
I, I think-
The truth be told, if the council says no tonight for that $2 million, where would you get the $2 million from, Mr. Zelinski?
I wouldn't. We've already made up for that with the, part of the delinquent tax revenue.
Right, so, so Madam President, so Madam President, may I be recognized?
Yes, yes, go right ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. So the, the, it was initially the intent of the city to use the $2 million, Madam President, to, and, and of course, going to DCA for approval. DCA said, "We could not take those $2 million." So in the end, the city was not able to use the $2 million, and they were left in the water department. So they, the money was not taken from water.
Okay. All righty, so, Mr. Collin, we might, we need to move forward with this budget, and I guess we're at the position-
Well, well, Council President, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I have, I did have a question regarding the water utility surplus because it's still not clear. Every day, the story changes. So, let's be clear here. That surplus belongs to the resident taxpayers of the city. That's due after all the operating costs of a utility have been covered. of the utility have been covered. So, um, you know, so clearly their surplus and the utility remains self liquidating. So, the question is, how much of a surplus, what is the balance of the surplus account to date? And, and that's not clear because the administration via his finance department, Mr. Zelensky, or his administrator, Mr. Cruz, have not made that apparent. So, we have, we do not know how much is in the water department surplus. So, um, then they report that uh there was a change, a decrease in the allocation, the transfer of surplus from fiscal year twenty-twenty. Uh, it was three point three million, they, they, in the past, they transferred three million dollars from the water department surplus to help with the general budget of the city. So this year, fiscal year twenty-one, where we saw increase in revenues due to water rates, we would, you know, logically think that, believe that the surplus account should have increased as well. Now, now somebody playing with that surplus account and that money has not been reconciled and no one had, we've been asking about it for two years now since we've been on council. And they have not ge- have given us transparency into that account. Now, what is so hard about giving or difficult about uh the finance department giving the, the, the council, the governing entity of the water utility and all departments in this city, the, the, the account balance and a surplus account? Now, um, our bond attorney at one time, uh, Mr. Ed McManaman, had came to council on a couple occasions to explain to us how the surplus account works and who has purview over it and when the council can use it to cover shortfalls in the city budget. And that it's up to the residents and taxpayers as to how much we use. But we can't even determine how much we use, we can use for the fiscal twenty-one budget because we don't even know what the balance is. So I can't in good conscience uh, uh, vote on this because I don't have adequate information. I don't know what the balance of that surplus is. I don't know why they chose one million or two million. I don't know why there has been a decrease from prior year. It was three point nine million last year that we, last fiscal year, we got in twenty-twenty, the health service that we've transferred from the surplus account to the city general budget. And now it's decreased to one million? What is going on over there? That makes no sense. And who gave that authority and the taxpayers had, you know, was not, Mayor Gussior did not communicate any such thing to the taxpayers and the owner of the water utility. And that's just unacceptable. And this council should not move forward until we get some explanation as to the health of that surplus account and how much we're going to use to help us get through this budget for fiscal year twenty-one. Because if we have to cut, then we need, we, we need that surplus. And if it's available to us, we have a right, we are entitled to use it. Now, if, if it doesn't exist, then we're just, well, and the balances are so low because it's been fleeced for whatever reason or mismanaged, then that's, that's a whole nother issue, right? So we just need to know, uh, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Zelensky and Mayor Gussior about that surplus account. And uh, right now, our budget is facing a, 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 a level cut that unprecedented, unprecedented. So we cannot deliver the city services to our residents at the level that is expected for, for a population of eighty-four thousand people and in the midst of a pandemic. So we need, a- a- at any time, the city of Trenton needs to tap that surplus to help us with our budget is now, is for fiscal twenty-one. So, that surplus was not to be used for other, for, for, for higher, higher patronage jobs and friends of the mayor and pay six-figure salaries. That surplus is to help the taxpayers of this city cover their budget in the event that they have a shortfall that was not, that they cannot cover in ordinary circumstances. And we had extraordinary circumstances with the pandemic. So if there was any time we need that surplus, we need it now. And, and, and the mayor and, and the business administrator just are being disingenuous and they're not being transparent. And that is unacceptable and I, it just cannot be tolerated. And I'm not voting for this budget because they don't, they're not prepared to, to show me those numbers tonight. All they gotta do is get to the bank and print out that account and show this, tell, show us taxpayers what is the balance of that account. And let's see how much then is up to the council to take a vote with the public to see how much we can move to help our city balance the fifty, the, the fiscal year twenty-one budget. And that's the bottom line. And don't tell me that the mayor has the unilateral authority or some gov- a gov- a state agency because that is just false. And anybody who believes that, I mean, you know, you know, need, need to develop some brain cells because that's some bull. Because I'm not buying it, it's, it's blatantly false. And if Mr. De Hope is not on this line to explain that, then, then, then uh, we need to co- we need to coun- cancel his contract because he need to get on here because he's supposed to represent this council. All business of that water utility. So, and that's the way surplus works. So y'all, you, you guys can take this budget, Mr. Cruz. And I, and I asked you also to, to break out the operating expense. You didn't even do that. So, I don't know about this fuzzy accounting that you guys are pulling here with the water department, but it is fuzzy. So, so you need to get that together and go back to the drawing board, go through that spreadsheet and, and start segregating these accounts and show us what's the difference, the operating cost over at that water utility. That's what we need to know. Because fifty-one million dollars is a greasish for a water utility that's under oversight. And, and, and in the midst of a lawsuit for mismanagement of the funds from our customer base. So I, I, I'm done, but I'm not voting for this until I get some answers from that water, on that water department, from the mayor. And he could sit there and hide behind his business administrator and behind Ron Zelensky, but it's the mayor who moved that, those funds. And so he needs to be held accountable for that. That he needs to come to this city and tell us what happened to our surplus, surplus money because we need it now for fiscal twenty-one budget.
Thank you, Council President.
Madam President?
Y- yes, yes, Mr. Cruz, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, the, the intent of the administration, uh, I'm gonna address just one of the, two of the comments that uh Councilwoman Vaughn um, uh, made. Um, the, when it comes to the surplus, there, um, we tried using uh two million dollars from the surplus in the budget and DCA flat out said we could not use it. Every line, Madam President, every line in this budget, if you see, a- a- as, you know, the page that you see in front of you right now?
Yes.
Every single line of that budget was reviewed by the Department of Community Affairs. Um, we could say as, as, as much as we want, we use fuzzy math. Well, it was not fuzzy mat- math for DCA because DCA went through it. And, 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 and whether you disagree or not, it, it is exactly what, what the Department of Community Affairs saw. And they said, you know, you can move forward with these numbers. It, the mayor has no authority over the Department of Community Affairs as to whether they are going to approve it or not. We have no saying on that and you are all witnesses of that. Because we got called in front of the lieutenant governor when things were not going a certain way. So, so it's, it's, you know, so I, I, you know, I, there, there isn't, there isn't much that we can do when you have the Department of Community Affairs going through this budget, literally, line by line. What you see there, we probably spent ten minutes, fifteen minutes on that one page alone. It took us two weeks to go over the entire book, which you will have a copy of, and they went through it line by line. And that is what they came back. The, the, the deputy director of the local government services along with an expert in budgets, you had somebody else that also is the expert in budget in the local finance board, and then you have the director and you have the lieutenant governor. And they, I'm not sure that the lieutenant governor saw this budget, but she's aware. It, it, it's incredible to say that out of five hundred and sixty-five municipality, the city of Trenton is at the tip of their tongue when it comes to this budget. Because everybody down the line got a chance to, you know, to, to say something about it. So, you know, it, you know, what, whether, listen, I, I, some things I agree with you, some things I don't disagree, but this budget was reviewed line by line. Now, Ron, um, do you um, do you have the latest uh surplus um, um, total that you have that you can share with Ms. Vaughn? I um, I'm not sure if that is the number, the, the, the person that works in your department that works with water, um, did she share that with you this morning or this afternoon?
Well, I knew. At June thirtieth, we had, at year end, we had eight point four million dollars worth of water surplus. In the water budget, we used almost seven million one hundred thousand of that surplus to balance the water budget. The question that came up with DCA was, yes, we anticipated an eight million dollar increase in water fees. And there's considerable doubt as to whether we're gonna collect that eight million dollars or not. That's why the budget was reduced.
Okay, so, 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 Mr. Cruz, um, this, um, I'm just gonna make this statement and we can move on, Mr. Conlon. And my, my statement is because you wanted to use the money out of the surplus for this budget and, and, yes, because I remember uh Ms. Garrett telling us, hey, we can only use five percent to come to find out that there, that five percent was not the end-all for the residents to use out of the surplus. What my point is that if you, once you realize that you had to tap into that reserve, your first order of business should have been to contact the council. And that is just the way that it is. And you guys just keep going around that. And if we would say to you this evening that you cannot use that surplus, we, the state would automatically be taking over this city in the morning. And so I'm saying to you guys that you should recognize when you should come to this body and address that water and other departments as well. You should not wait for it to get to the wire. And so when we talk about this budget being presented to us at the last minute and DCA had to come in and force the mayor to present this budget to us no later than January the nineteenth, that should have never occurred. And so I'm saying to the administration this, we're, the council is placed in a situation where if we don't vote to pass this budget tonight, tomorrow the state is in control. And I feel as though they're in control anyway, but they would be in control in every aspect of the way. And for the mayor to run the clock out on this budget like he did, not allowing the council the opportunity to go through this budget line by line, because even if a lot, if some of the council members don't participate, we spend a lot of time going over this budget line by line. I see some um deficiencies in the police department. I see that you have people on the payroll with a salary that has retired. I see people in the law department that never should have been on the civil service list, that never was on the civil service list, that has been placed in positions and we have a list of civil service employees. I see so many deficiencies in this budget. But because you push us to the twelfth hour, then we can't do what we should be doing, going through this thing line by line and addressing each and every aspect of this budget. So I say to the administration this, if you plan on trying to move this cali- this budget to a uh six-month calendar year, my suggestion to you, Mr. Cruz, to Mr. Zelensky, and to the, to the mayor, you had better start moving real quick to pr- do presentations for this body or this, there will never be a movement to a six-month calendar year because.
I'm not voting for that. I'm not voting for that either.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Vaughn.
I'm not voting for that, Council President. You're not speaking for me.
Please. So what I'm saying to you is that if you are planning on moving this budget to a six-month calendar year, you had better begin the process of educating this body with the presentations that the DCA had for us to understand what that movement would be, what the pros and the cons is for that movement. And that, that is my take on this. So, Mr. Conlon, can we move forward with the uh, with this budget?
Um, Council President, I just want to ask you.
Yes, yes, I'm, yes, um, I'm gonna let Mr. Conlon finish his answer, give your time in, mister, and then you could come in, Mr. uh, uh, Councilman Rodriguez. Let Mr. Conlon finish whatever it was he was trying to say.
Uh, Council President, a number of people, and I see the phone lines have opened up because a number of people have joined by phone. Did you want to open up public portion briefly again?
I want to, yes, I want to hear from the councilman first and then we can open it back up to the public.
Yes, thank you very much. Councilman Rodriguez, your portion.
Yeah, Mr. Conlon, can you tell?
Hold on, I'm trying to, hold on, one second. I can't hear you because I'm trying to mute somebody. Okay, I'm taking care of that. Go ahead, sir, please.
The surplus, the surplus, I, I, we didn't get an answer. He said that there were eight point four million and some money was taken for the bu- for the uh water work bu- budget.
Uh.
There be a surplus. You have two different numbers here.
This is for fiscal year twenty-twenty on the right side and this is for fiscal year twenty-two one, sir.
No, 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 no. He's asking about when Mr. Zelensky said they had to use eight million dollars for, to bud- to balance the water budget. That's what he's asking for some clarity on that.
Mr. Cruz, Mr. Zelensky, sir?
Uh, yes, I, I would like for Mr. Zelensky, if possible, for him to repeat what he uh said a few minutes ago.
Our, our balance in water surplus as of June thirtieth was eight million four hundred thousand dollars. We utilized almost seven million one hundred thousand dollars in this year's water budget. That only leaves us a balance of one point three million dollars in surplus.
I believe they're asked why.
That, that is, that is incredible. That is incredible. We never knew about this. Never.
That is incredible. Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you. That is incredible. Shame on Council President and Council Vice President who will not stand for this council and these people in this city. That, that is.
Okay, please let Councilman speak, ma'am.
The thing is that we have been, we allocated what, fifty million dollars about, what, five, six months ago, and they were claiming, oh, the finances are, are, are fine, beautiful. I requested through a resolution, a financial report from Water Works over, 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 and I, all I got was a general thing that wasn't, didn't add anything, didn't mention how much the surplus was. And now you're coming with this that you have to use seven point some million dollars to balance the Water Works budget? I, I, I can't believe it, you know. You know, I was intending to vote for this, but uh, uh, the only way I could vote is if we approved the rest, but not this Water Works thing. I'm not gonna vote for this. I cannot.
Cannot.
I'd like to know where those seven million dollars went. You know, we have a, a forensic audit going on there. What is the deal? What's going on with Mr. Lavender? I, I said it at the beginning. I voted against his nomination. I voted against it because I knew that he came here to bankrupt Water Works. That's his job through Waystream. And don't deny through Waystream and American Water and whoever, and those big corporations. He works for them. I am sorry, but I cannot vote with this. No, how can we? How? You have plenty time since January to bring us those numbers. And you kept on going around the bush? Oh, no. And you kept on going around the bush, oh, no, uh, DCA said to take two million, but now you're not talking about two million, you're talking about seven million. Not two million, seven, so who is saying the truth? I, I tell you, who is saying the truth about this? You know, I'm sorry, but I can't, I have to abstain from voting on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, uh, you indicated that you'd like-
Yes, yes, I said that we would move straight to hear the public because they, they were having difficulty.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open up public portion again, do the technical difficulties again, if you'd like to be recognized by the Trenton City Council to speak on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendment and adoption, uh, please either unmute yourself from your phone and speak up, or raise your hand, or otherwise try to get my attention. Uh, we have concerned citizen guests and concerned citizen, uh, Council President, would you like to recognize concerned citizen who will identify themselves with their address?
Yes, definitely.
Concerned citizen, please speak and identify your name and address, please.
Hello, my name's, uh, Luke Thompson, I'm a resident of Ewing Township. Um, I'm curious about this budget as well. Um, in Ewing, our water bills have doubled and tripled.
You say they came up with seven million dollars, not two?
Okay, exactly, seven million dollars, where did it go? What is going on, why is our bill getting so much more? Our water ready fee was twice the price of our usage, this past bill. I have called eight times to the director or the supervisor of customer service, and she has not replied to me. I get the runaround, figure it out, because Ewing Township is going to come and figure this out if you do not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody else wish to be recognized for the public portion of, of the budget hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one?
I see someone with the, uh, name, uh, C.C.
That was concerned citizen, ma'am, he just spoke, that was Mr. Thompson, if you're on the phone, you can unmute. By star six, yes, sir, please state your name today.
Good, good evening, my name is Bill Kearney of Le Cleed Avenue in the West Ward. Um, I just want to say that I'm very disappointed in this budget process, uh, and specifically, I want to keep my comments to the Trenton Water Works, um, the fact that it seems to be bleeding money and nobody seems to care. Um, I, it's been brought to my attention as a, as a local, uh, uh, you know, engaged citizen, that there's rampant, rampant, uh, corruption, overtime abuse, um, uh, people unqualified and getting promotions, people without high school degrees or high school diplomas, people without driver's licenses, the list goes on and on and on. But all we hear from the mayor is, we're fully staffed, we're fully staffed, we're paying people for part-time to work for seventy-five thousand, up to seventy-five thousand a year, part-time. Looks like the Water Works is getting packed with part-time or friends and family, um, to do no-show jobs. Um, I, I could go on and on, and I will reach out to someone on council, I'm not sure yet, with my piles and piles of information that's been provided to me by people who are on the inside. And I, my head's ready to explode because I just don't, nobody's doing anything, no one's questioning, no one's demanding anything, no one's asking for papers, God knows, I and other people have a long list of Oprah requests trying to get to the bottom of this stuff, and those aren't being fulfilled. So I beg this council to reach out to me, or I'll reach out to anyone who's willing to listen, and, and, and tell your auditors to put them on the scent, on the direction and look into it. I hope I'm wrong, I want to be wrong, but I've been hearing too often and from too many people that there's too much shenanigans going on over there. You've got people who are unqualified, who are allowed to make decisions with impunity, with hiring, who's also a billing expert apparently too, yet eighty percent of our system hasn't been billed? That's, maybe that's where the two million dollars is. Has even the hydrant services billing for the township's been sent out? I understand that's, what, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars? Where's that, has that been sent out and collected? You know, I always get a bill whether I can pay it or not, I don't, and I've lived here thirty-two years, and this is the first year I've lived here where I've had to beg for my water bill, and, and I can't find out how much I owe, and online doesn't let me pay because they don't show an amount. It just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. And like I said, somehow this all worked up until this administration, here we are, and I'm going to end it there for now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Council President, next we have Antonella Capobianco Rinaldo.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Capobianco Rinaldo, please unmute yourself and, and be recognized. Ma'am? Ma'am, if you, if you look for the little microphone and hit the spacebar, uh, if you have any problem, we will, uh, if anybody else wants to jump in, uh, well, you, you can either disconnect and try to reconnect, or try to unmute yourself, ma'am. Does anybody else wish to be recognized, Ms. Capo? Ma'am, have you been able to unmute yourself? Uh, Council President, uh, while we wait for Ms. Capobianco Rinaldo to unmute herself, uh, if you could, ma'am, come back in, uh, that might help, in the meantime, I'll give Evangeline Ugore.
Yes, someone, someone needs to mute themselves.
Ms. Ugore, we get a lot of feedback off your line, if you could take yourself off and you have been recognized by council.
Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, um, Evangeline of Adeline Street in the South Ward of Trenton. Can you hear me? Yes, you can. Yes, I'd like to, uh, um, echo what the previous people before me have spoken, specifically regarding the Trenton Water Works. I want to thank those of our council people who are keeping the eye on this, uh, utility, and who are asking the hardcore questions of this administration and the Trenton Water Works administration. Um, the problem is not with the little people, it's with the big people in administration. And, uh, I was very upset when this, uh, current director was voted in, as you guys have heard me speak severally on this forum regarding what's actually going on at that water utility. Nobody, including this current administration, wants anything done right over there, and that is why we, we still have the same corruption going on. Again, let me reiterate what everybody, most of us in the public think. In order for you to be in the administration at the Trenton Water Works, you do not have to have the requisite, uh, uh, educational and or, uh, professional licensure and or credentials, you just have to be a connected person. And again, as I've mentioned in the past, all the quip pro quoing, all the laundering that's going on over there, this is the stock exchange is threatening, and the Water Works is the, uh, is a hotspot, okay? This is going to obviously keep going on if nothing is done. At the very least, if we must suffer through this year through ongoing obfuscation, which seems to be the hallmark of this administration, you know, via, via the squad, that, that, the, the, the A-triple-C obfuscation squad, you know, um, we will suffer through it, but come next year when election time comes up, this is the age and era of instant recall and replays, where we'll remind them about what's going on and how it is. Without commensurate, uh, incrementing the value of any properties and or allies and or related services that are supposed to be coming from these facilities and or the administration in general. So I join my fellow Trenton and related neighboring city, uh, citizens who are, who have their eye on, on, on what's going on here in Trenton. Nobody in Trenton wants to do the right thing, something's got to give, something's got to give, election time is around the corner. At the very least, if we don't get anything done now, next year when the election time comes around, this will be uppermost in our mind. Enough of this BS, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President, yes, we now, now have Antonella Capobianco Rinaldo, Ms. Capobianco Rinaldo, you're recognized, please unmute yourself and speak. Ma'am, you're going to have to unmute yourself, uh, either look for the microphone, uh, she's exited the meeting. Uh, Council President, until she comes back, Freedom Green, please.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Green.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you've been recognized by council, sir.
Thank you, so real quickly, just to the council president, to the council members, I think, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn is spot on, she's asking critical questions, she's asking for things, we as, uh, even if we're not elected officials, we all should be asking for transparency, accountability, and responsible behavior. When you talk about millions of dollars being moved around, I don't want to throw words around like corruption, because again, you're talking about character, and you're speaking about things that may or may not be able to be proven, I'd like the process to play out itself. I, I too would like to see where we are with, again, with the Water Works and this audit, so we can see the hard data and the numbers there, so we can know what we have, but I think Councilwoman Vaughn is spot on. And I guess my last point would be if I'm hearing council members adamantly say that they're against what's being presented to them, and you're not aligned with what's being given to the council, and you're not good with what is being, uh, laid at your feet, then nobody should be abstaining, but collectively, you should be voting against this. It's a simple, I think your statement needs to be profound, as a collective body, you're saying, this is not being done correctly, and you're voting no until it's brought to you the correct way where you can have what you need, see what you need, and again, I think each year that we present the budget late, it speaks to dysfunction, it speaks to unprofessionalism, it also makes, uh, other agencies not take us seriously. So I would like to see this council vote as a collective body, if you're against what you're seeing, you're saying is not being presented properly, I'd like to see a collective no to send a profound statement to say, you're moving as one body for one reason, which is our city. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Council President, next we have Mr. Michael Rinaldo.
Yes, Mr. Rinaldo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Finally, thank you. Um, I just want to echo what the previous speakers had said, um, I've been following the budget process, um, fairly closely, and looking at the Water Works numbers this evening and agreeing one hundred percent with what Councilwoman Vaughn has said, I don't see how this could be voted for, um, in the, in the affirmative to pass the budget, there's just too many questions and it's too confusing. And I really hope this is not a situation where the excuse is going to be, oh, the DCA backed us into a corner, we need to accept what they gave us, because we do not need to accept what they give us. You can vote against this budget, the state will not come in and take over tomorrow morning, the DCA will work with us, and as a body, I believe you must reject this budget based solely on the Water Works this evening, it was just the numbers are a mess. Um, so anyway, that's my opinion, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Uh, current, uh, Council President, next we have Ms. Sherri Garette.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garette.
Uh, and if anybody, uh, ladies and gentlemen, if you were not on the council, please mute yourself, stay muted, one second, please, uh, somebody has part of the last, please find that muted, please. Ms. Garette, you've been recognized.
Thank you, um, Council President and the rest of the council body, I, I, again, as I, it, it, uh, re, will, will reiterate again, um, we are, this budget has to be trimmed down, um, I, 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 I just, we have to collectively, uh, sta- stand, stand, you know, take a position. Um, as I stated on Tuesday, I, you know, that budget is what, what, uh, DCA was saying to the administration, that, that is the amount they will accept in cost to operate, but we still can trim down that, that budget. And again, I, I apologize, I couldn't get in earlier, so I did not, uh, get to really, um, um, hear the, uh, the, um, presentation with Trent Water Works, but a lot of those figures can be moved around, and a lot of it has to be taken out, these, these numbers, especially for other expenses, because, uh, to me, it seems like we, we, uh, farm out or we outsource a lot of, of the, um, um, clerical aspects of, of things that has to be done in the city, so I don't understand why other expenses were so high in all areas of, of, uh, the city, far as, uh, administration, but we really need to trim that budget down. And it's also, um, you know, council, you all pass a lot of these resolutions, there should be a budget that you all should have put together collectively, based on a lot of the expenses that were approved, and a lot of the, what they came to you, and kind of measure out, kind of have in the ballpark, what, when, when that, when that budget was presented late or not, it, there, there just should have been some figures that you, which could have kind of like had something to compare with. Um, and again, those resolutions, when they're submitted for, submitted to the council, there has to be more information, more detail, um, and, 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 and in those resolutions, you, you have to add some more language where that money has to be spent the way they have stated it should, it's for the purpose of why they're bringing these resolutions to council for, for, um, expenditures. That's all I have to say, I, I yield the floor.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council for the public portion of the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-one amendment and adoption?
Yes.
Uh, your name, ma'am?
My name is Nikki Enders, my address is two thirty-one Columbia Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey.
Council President, would you like to recognize-
Go right ahead, yes.
Yes, um, I'm very disappointed in this whole Water Works situation, the Water Works only have two people in the whole billing department, that billing department covers Mercer, all of Mercer County. I want to know why it's only two people working to solve the problem of the billing. I haven't even gotten a water bill yet, and if I get a water bill that's high and my water be turned off because there's nothing going on and we wondering why Trent is in debt, it's so much going on, it's everything with the water department, the water department, is dysfunctional in there, as always, and too much is going on. So we need to get that budget not passed and have DCA step in, because this is too much going on with the water department. So with that being said, please handle and please vote against this budget, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else wish to be recognized for the public portion of the Trenton City Council, Mr. Dan Fattin, Council President?
Go right ahead, Mr. Fattin.
Uh, thank you, Council President, and thank you, council. Dan Fattin, one twenty Jackson Street in Trenton in the North Ward, and, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't able to join the call until I think the presentation was mostly completed, and I missed much of, uh, the detail here. Um, I would echo a lot of what's been said in terms of the calls for transparency and, and, and the need to really understand the numbers, but I, at the same time, caution that it seems we're throwing around terms like corruption, uh, based on hearsay, based on conspiracy theories, based on unknown, you know, comments from unknown people, and it just is a little alarming that this is what we might be basing decisions on. And so I, I support that council is looking into the numbers, and I think that, you know, the idea that we should do a forensic audit of what's actually happening with the numbers is, is good, uh, you know, as, even as a supporter of the mayor and someone who thinks that this administration has actually done a good job on many issues. Sure, look into the numbers on the Trenton Water Works so that we can have an informed discussion, but the idea that we can say corruption, 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 doesn't make it so. Sometimes the simplest answer is the true one, and actually, what might be happening here is that it's expensive to run a water system. We didn't invest in the infrastructure of our water system for decades. So the idea that, you know, there's big expenses shouldn't be shocking to anyone. We need to invest in the system if we want it to be safe and effective for distribution of water to people in the city and to the people in the surrounding communities who rely upon this Water Works. So by all means, let's call for transparency, but maybe we should use a little more caution before we insist that there's something nefarious and corrupt hap- insist that there's something nefarious and corrupt happening, when actually, what is more likely the case is that we're finally investing in a system that's been woefully ignored for many, many years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Council President, Mr. Paul Harris wishes to be recognized.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people, and I know they don't want to hear it, because it's always the workers, workers, workers. I just, I've never heard anyone say anything positive. But listen, please always remember, there are hardworking people here in the city of Trenton, hardworking labor, men and women who do their best with the resources we have. And I understand, since governments existed, there's always been a disconnect between the people who fund it, and the people who literally prop it up. I understand that. But I also want to remind everyone on this call that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and the city has had to make hard choices as it relates to having people show up to work and get sick. People who have wives, husbands, elderly parents, and to have to force them to come to work every single day. There are some of us who have done that, but there are a lot of people who cannot afford to do that, and do not want to be, take that risk. More importantly, you see every day with the DMV across the state that are shutting down every other day because of COVID. The city has done its best, and this is not Paul Harris defending the mayor, because I'm here. This is me recognizing that we have 1,200 employees who take risks every single day. I mean, how do you read a meter if you have to literally interact? I mean, how do you give out bills if you have to get women and men in a room together, and you don't know if they're going to test positive, if you're going to bring that mess home to your family? So all these people who are coming here and running their mouths, listen, you have the right to do that, because you pay taxes. But please, I ask you every meeting, remember, there are men and women behind these dollars. There's no corruption here. I haven't heard a single person ask what the revenue was. Because I can look at it and tell you that revenue's down, because Governor Phil Murphy has clearly said that you don't have to pay any utility bill up until June 30th. So why hasn't a council member asked the director, how are we doing with revenue? Because if people, even if we bill it, you don't have to pay it. So that's the first thing. The second thing is the liability if you force your employees to show up to work. And then somebody gets sick, and they take that home, and that's happened at the county. Someone got sick, she brought that home, and her husband passed. Simple things like that. And I'm yelling, and I apologize, but I just, there are, there are good men and women here. Yes, we need training. Yes, we need a lot of different things. But listen, we do our best with what we got. But listen, there's a pandemic going on. And I got girls here in my, in the cashier's office who come here, and they've been here, and they've been working, and they've been doing their best to collect what they can. I'm sorry that you call, and people don't pick up. Listen, it's hard to work from home with some of these systems. But you guys, the council members, let me tell you something. I need to settle this contract. I need to do hazard pay. There's a thousand things I need to do. And the holdup has not been the mayor. This is, the timing is perfect for us with the, with Joe Biden, what he's done for Trenton, with the governor's election, with next year's election. The last thing I need is for you guys to not vote for this budget, and then the state to really come in here, and to say, you know what, listen, breadcrumbs for everyone. Sometimes you got to just bite the bullet. We got 73 million coming. We'll have guidance in short time, and then we can decide how we're going to spend that money. Listen, this is going to be the next six months, next four years are going to be our best years. We've never had this kind of money come here. You know, I, I just, I don't know. I just, that's what I got to say. But ask the question, how are we doing with revenue? Because if revenue's down, then that would make sense, ladies and gentlemen, why you would use your $8 million surplus. Because if you're not taking money in, then you got to balance it. It's no difference from you and I. Listen, you have a healthy savings account, right? But guess what? If I'm not making what I used to make, I'm dipping into my savings. Common sense. Everybody's not here to steal money, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else wish to be recognized for the public portion of the public hearing for the Fiscal Year 2021 Amendment and Adoption of the Trenton City Budget? If you're on a phone, you can unmute yourself by dialing star six. Council President, I don't see anybody else who want to, any last call? Anybody wish to be recognized for the public portion of the Trenton City Council Public Hearing for the Fiscal Year 2020 Adoption and Amendment of the Budget? Do you have a motion to close public portion for a second time?
No move.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I'll call the roll for this. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison, have you arrived, sir? Mr. Harrison, this is Lauter. Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Sorry. Yes.
And Council President McRae?
Yes.
All eyes, public portion is closed. Council President, would you like to continue the public portion? I'm sorry, with the public hearing for any council members, would you like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a question. I have a few questions.
Council President, Mr. Blakely?
Thank you. So, I have a few questions for the administration. Before I start, I'd like to say that I am voting in favor of this budget. I think the questions I had on Tuesday were answered to my satisfaction, and I'd like to ask a few questions for clarification. Number one, what happens if we do not pass this budget? What will be the reaction from DCA? Mr. Cruz?
Councilman, DCA gave the mandate that we had to abide by on April 1st. When we were going through the last couple of amendments from those hearings that we had a couple of weeks ago, we asked if we could move the budget adoption to next week or the week after, and they stayed firm on the man that we adopt this budget today. They have not disclosed to me as to what is going to happen. They have not disclosed to me what is going to happen if, if the budget is not adopted. But I know for sure that that is going to create an issue with us sending the second quarter bills, tax bills, which are the fourth quarter of our fiscal year budget.
Okay, so that was actually going to be my next, my next question. Can you tell me what happens if we do not send out these bills, you know, immediately after the passage of this budget, or the possible adoption of this budget this evening? What happens in terms of revenue for the city?
Well, if, if we don't, if we don't send the budget bill sometime, we will not be allowed to use that money into this year's fiscal year, and that is going to create a bigger, a bigger problem for us for this year, and also into the next budget year.
Okay. Another question I have is, can you let me know the, I guess I'm trying to figure the way to say this. Can you let me know the possible options that DCA can exercise if we don't pass this, if we don't pass this budget?
Well, I mean, the DCA being the arm, well, the Division of Local Government Services being the, the arm of the Department of Community Affairs, can, I mean, they have plenty of tools in their, in their toolbox, and, and they will act accordingly. I, I don't want to speculate as to what level of intervention they will have, should this not happen tonight.
Let me ask another question. There's been some concern generally about the use of the surplus to plug the Water Works budget, as well as, you know, the municipal budget. Can you tell me what the surplus is generally used for? What are the, the uses of the, of the surplus?
So, Councilman, I would have Ron Zielinski give you a more detailed breakdown. Ron, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
This is Ron Zielinski. We use surplus to balance the water budget every year. This is not anything new. Surplus is utilized every year as part of the water utility budget.
Okay. Let, let me ask another question. Why do we have such, now I know the answer to this, but I want to ask it for the public's benefit. Why are the revenues of the Water Works so low? Like, is there a revenue issue? And if there is a revenue issue, why?
I think that was partially answered. We, we hadn't had a rate increase in a number of years. And we did a rate, I'm not sure I was retired. We did a rate increase last year for the Water Works, and I think that was the first rate increase in potentially 15 years.
Let, let me ask another question. And this is for the Water Director, the Director of the Water Works. Can you tell me if COVID, if the pandemic that we're in the midst of has had any deleterious impact on the revenues in the Water Works? And also, let me follow up with that question. I, I would like to know if folks, if COVID has impacted the ability of people to get their bills. So, you know, people are not getting their bills. Is that a result of a smaller force of employees who can actually do the job because of, or they can't do their job because of COVID?
Thank you, Councilman Blakely. So, two parts to that question. One is the billing, and the other one is the actual meter reading. So we'll start with the meter reading, because that's the rubber that actually hits the room. As you're all aware, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and the city has graciously, you know, put the entire city on what's called an AB schedule. So you'll typically work a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, one week, and then the following week, a Tuesday, and a Thursday. But in, in essence, what you mean is that we have half the workforce doing it. And when it comes to meter reading with the system that we currently have in place, we physically have to go to our 63,000 customers, okay? And because we were working at that half schedule, we did fall further and further behind in our billing schedule, to the point where we're going to have to do a makeup of a standby fee, which should recoup most of that money. We did have, we did have several cases and outbreaks here at the facility, at Courtland Street, where the meter shop is, and we had to shut down for two, two-week periods where the, the building was completely shut down, had to be thoroughly cleaned to stop the outbreak. Our concern was for our employees coming in contact with the, the virus, or perhaps, you know, our, our employees having the virus, and then coming in contact with our customers. So that is, that is, that's the essence of that. When it comes to the billing section, again, the same thing. We're all in one room where it comes to billing and customer service, okay? And again, we've had cases of, you know, of COVID in that area, within large portions of the staff, given that they're working in AB schedule, then we had to start quarantining among that. So there were times in the billing department, we were down to just a few people working in the billing department, people that, after contact tracing, were deemed that they could work in the building. We've done everything we can to get ourselves back onto a full schedule. And if I also might just add, at the same time, we also have, you know, concern for our customers. Our customers are also struggling to pay their bills during this pandemic. So in addition to that, the state has handcuffed us, so we have no mechanism to, to go to our customers to get the money that's due to us. We're not allowed to do order shut offs, and, you know, not saying that we want to do, even want to do that in a pandemic, but there, there's no incentive for our customers to pay their bills. Now, fortunately, and very fortunately, the vast, vast majority of our customers are paying their bills and staying active. But it's, it's a twofold thing. It's a collections issue, and it's also our ability to get out and read those meters. And if I could just add in further, and in extreme gratitude to the council for passing part of that $50 million bond ordinance, $20 million is going to be dedicated to a smart meter system, okay? This will get us into the 20th century with the ability for us to pick up the vital meter readings remotely, so we don't have to enter homes and businesses to get those, to get those meter reads. We'll be able to do it from a truck, far removed from that happening. But that is a process that we hope to go out to bid for this summer, and we would like to start, you know, getting those meters installed by the end of the year. It is going to be a four- to six-year process to get the entire system on these smart meters. But I mean, we, we do have a plan going forward with that. But I, I appreciate your question, and sorry for taking up so much time.
And let me ask another question. There is, you know, several folks have raised, I think, meritless concerns around allegations of corruption. I think that it's completely irresponsible to, you know, bring up allegations that are not proven, and to impugn the integrity of the hard workers at the Trenton Water Works. I would also like to ask, can you tell me about the increases, increases in staffing at the Water Works? For years, there were, you know, vacancies, and there was not enough staff actually working at the Water Works? Can you tell me how many, you know, vacancies exist? How many positions have been filled? And are many of those folks Trenton residents?
Again, I appreciate the question. Currently, our staffing level is about 168 employees with Trenton Water Works. And I agree with you, back in 2019, I think when I first became involved with the Trenton Water Works, we were really, really, you know, needed operators, particularly at the filtration plant, and laborers over here in the Construction and Maintenance Division. We are very, very proud of the hiring that we did, almost exclusively Trenton residents, okay, that, that came to our utility from various backgrounds, and various levels of educations. And we are extremely proud of the, the ability that we are conducting licensed operator classes here at Courtland Street. In addition to that, we are the first and the only utility in the state of New Jersey to have an apprenticeship program that is approved by the New Jersey Department of Labor, and they are facilitating us by paying 50% of the salaries of all our apprentices. The only thing that's holding us back from increasing that apprenticeship program is mentors, okay? So we do need, we do need experienced people that can mentor these people coming in and learning a valuable skill that they can use here for the city of Trenton. But once they obtain that license, they can take that license anywhere. And I, I stand proud by that, as maybe like the crowning achievement of this utility, is to be a great source for well-paying jobs in a profession that these people will have for the rest of their lives.
Okay, so, so first, thank you so much. My questions are over, but I will end with this. Trenton, we have significant challenges. Many of the challenges have been addressed, I think all of the challenges that were raised tonight have been, have been addressed in a thoughtful and cogent way. There are people who are interested in the worst-case scenario. They believe corruption is everywhere, because it is in their political benefit to believe so. They believe that the only way that they can...
Councilman Blakely, can you say that for your civic comment, please?
Absolutely, ma'am. I'll wait until my civic comments. I will, thank you.
Council President McRae?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes, I just wanted to say a few things, you know, regarding some of the comments, because transparency has been an issue between the administration and council.
Can we, can we, can we keep it to the budget?
I want to talk about the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, I think that, I think that Mr. Cruz has heard this loud and clear. So when we processed with this budget, when we worked on this budget, and we've been working on it for months, not everybody, but some of us, back and forth with Mr. Cruz, we have been able to come, we want, we did, we wanted a zero tax increase for the residents of the city of Trenton, because everybody has been hit hard with this COVID. And, and people are hurting, and we can't afford to increase taxes, because what is happening is the taxes are so high right now that people are leaving, even in my community. They're selling their homes, and they're moving away. The Water Works is in the process of having a forensic audit done. And when that is complete, we will be able to see the real story, and we will be able to push the Trenton Water Works and enforce the recommendations by the forensic audit. If there was anything done inappropriately, it will be in that forensic audit, and they will, it will be so duly noted, and maybe heads will roll, I don't know. But this council pushed for years. But this council pushed for years to get a forensic audit done. I think that, I believe that Mr. Cruz and the administration have actually cooperated with this council. Everything we have asked for, they have attempted to give us. We've not always been happy, but we have tried. Had this been done in the very beginning, when this budget was put together, maybe we wouldn't be here today. So, my message to Mr. Cruz and the administration is, the next time we get down to doing a budget, it has to be more transparent. We have to know where everything is. And we need to know about all the revenues coming in and the departments that actually raise revenues. I would like to know how many revenues they have because it's very difficult to look through these hundreds of pages and try and figure out how much money is coming in and how much money is going out and what, how much money has been moved here and moved there. It's just very tedious. However, I, I do believe that it would be totally irresponsible not to approve this budget because of the issues that we're having with the water company. That is, that is something right now that, that we're working on. And we will not give up until we get all of them as straightened out with the water company. So, I think that it would be very irresponsible not to pass this budget. I believe that moving forward, the administration understands that we have to be more open with the public and with council on the spending of this and the running of this administration because this is what the budget's all about. You wouldn't have an administration if you didn't have a budget. So, I think that we really need to work very closely with Mr. Cruz. And we have to make sure, we have to change the way that we do business in the city of Trenton. And we have to start prioritizing what we need to spend in the city of Trenton. And not just leave that up to the administration. The council has to be part of that whole process. So, with that, I'm not, I have nothing else to say other than that we will hold our feet to the fire on the next budget. This fiscal year is almost over. Most of this budget has already been spent. So, I think that we can't risk being fined by DCA or being challenged because we didn't pass a budget. And the fact that there's a zero-tax increase, I'm going to support this budget. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, quick question. So, the Trenton Water Works is saying they have not able, they have not been able to collect their fees. Well, the, the governor has said that, of course, when it comes to utilities, that includes PSENG and other private water entities, that you didn't have to pay your bills. The residents didn't have to pay their bills. Businesses didn't have to pay their bills because of the pandemic. But the governor did that because he gave each city and municipality a funding from the, I mean, federal government as well, from the CARES Act. So, the governor propped up Trenton with 3.0, I believe, $3.2 million to help us sustain or overcome our, to avoid a budget crisis and to help the residents who can't afford, who lost jobs or income due to the pandemic and couldn't go to work. So, that is a, that is, you know, so what the mayor did with the CARES Act fund, funding is, is, is an issue. Because that money was given for that purpose. Knowing that you were not able, folks, that city business, the city business was going to shut down, not going to be fully staffed, and you will not be able to collect and, and do, and function and perform some of the functions that are required to, to read the meters, collect the bills, receive payment and et cetera. So, so that's another line item that we need. That was another source of revenue for fiscal year '21 that's unaccounted for in this budget. Where, where, what did the mayor do with the CARES Act funding? Because that's why our federal and state government gave municipalities that money because of issues like this, to cover the fact that we, we, we wouldn't have to collect the bills because we had the CARES Act money to lean on. And he squandered that as well. So, my question is about receivables. So, although you're not able to collect the funds because of the, because of the meters and you couldn't get employees in to collect, but I read in the Trentonian not too long ago that you had hired part-time employees to work in the accounts payable department, part-time at $46 an hour, to do just that, collect bills or payment or water fees that folks are behind on. So, you know, you can't come to council and to the public and say, oh, we, we can't collect water or, 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 on our bills, payment on our bills or receivables because, you know, because of COVID, when you had got money to absorb that potential deferred loss. So, what I want to know is although you're not able to collect, what is the balance, Mr. Zelensky, in the receivables? So, what is the dollar amount on the receivables account current, as of March 31st? The receivables. So, and, 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 I mean, maybe folks need to understand what receivables are, right? So, Mr. Zelensky, tell, tell the public what the receivable account, what, what, what it is.
I have not looked at that recently.
Good answer, sir.
Because we're only allowed to take cash as income in the budget. We cannot use receivables.
I understand that.
That we have to depend on.
Okay. So, again, does Mr. Lavenberg have that number, though? You should know what your receivables are. In any event, right? So, what are the receivables? So, what are we anticipating? What's outstanding? What, what is the amount of water bills that are outstanding, but we are expecting that, that, that money to come in at any, any day or whenever?
Well, we, we don't know exactly when it's going to be coming in, if it's actually going to come in.
I understand that. But what is the dollar amount, sir? Please, because this is a short meeting. My, my question is very easy and clear. What is the balance of the receivable account?
It's approximately $8 million. I don't have the figures here in front of me, but that's, that was my latest discussion today. And that was, that was with the BPU. And there may be some relief coming from the BPU to relieve some of the debt that the customers owe us. So, but we're very active. We're working with that group with Newark and, and PSENG and American Water and everybody that's in, in on that group as well. So, even though we're not under jurisdiction of the BPU, we're trying to get that money for relief for our customers as well.
Yeah. So, I, I understand that. But I just wanted to let the public know that when you, when you sit here and complain about COVID and the impact it had on your ability to perform your BAU functions and collecting business-as-usual functions to collect water bills, because, I mean, you couldn't get that money is the reason why we, we have lost revenues in the budget. It's, it's crap because the state and federal government has, has temporarily funded us through the CARES Act and other grant to ensure that utilities like Trenton Water Works and PSENG and, and Verizon and Comcast and all these companies are deemed utilities that you didn't have to pay your, people cannot pay their bills. So, the government is going to prop these utilities up until, by providing them funding. And that came through the CARES Act for the city of Trenton. But again, where is the accountability for that funding? So, that's why I cannot support this budget because it doesn't seem to me that, that folks are being forthcoming. Because you have hired part-time employees at $46 an hour to collect bills, okay? And I know, and I know that person has been working because, because the person made front page of Trentonian. So, I don't know. And as far as corruption, of course, there's corruption going on. Okay? There, we, we, we have proof positive that folks have been billing, no, no, no. No, no, no. Have been billing overtime. Right? So, so there, there, there are questions about corruption. So, and, 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 and those things are being investigated, okay? Trust me and believe, being investigated at the prosecutor's office, at the attorney general's office, in the FBI, in the federal. So, so, so don't, don't come to this council and you look around the city and, and say there, there is not any corruption. When you're hiring people who are unqualified, who work in positions without, that's corruption. When you hire relatives without qualifications, that's corruption. So, so I'm going to move on from that. But I want to know that you said 8 million is in the receivable account? And you have gotten CARES money and grant money from other sources to prop you up during, during the COVID? So, the COVID has zero impact on Trenton Water Works' ability to collect its bills? So, I, I mean, I can't, I just can't continue this, this, this conversation around this budget. It's a waste. And of course, I will not be voting for it. And I just want to say one thing. The council president has, has potentially, has called me out and said, oh, there are people on the council who's not attended budget meetings. Well, I can assure you that Councilwoman Robin Vaughn did not attend some of these budget meetings because they were a waste of time and we accomplished nothing, just like we're doing now. But I could tell you this, I read every single page through every department, every line item in that budget on my own. And I can sit down with Council President any day and go pound for pound, pound for pound, and I bet you I know more about the budget than you will ever know. So, you want to call me out on not participating on the budget? Then you do so. You don't have to go around it. You come at me directly.
I'm informed for that. Please do not call.
Okay. So, I'm just letting you know. You can't challenge me on my knowledge of this budget. So, I'm telling you that, that we're not, oh, don't Councilwoman me, Council President McBride.
Please show respect to the chair. Thank you.
Oh, oh, Mr. Collin, you show some respect to the Councilwoman of the West Ward when I'm speaking. You don't interrupt me.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Oh, no. Council McBride, you have repeatedly tried to undermine my efforts, and I'm not going to let you do it.
I don't have the time for it, and I won't go back and forth with you.
Oh, because you can't, because you cannot.
We're going to talk about this budget, okay? All righty. So, Mr., Mr. Collin, I wanted just to address a couple of things in reference to the budget before we move forward. And that is, when we went to the meeting with the lieutenant governor and, and the administration to discuss why the mayor had not produced a budget to us, and the lieutenant governor, along with the former director, stated to us, and this is for the public and for my council colleagues, that, that the budget had to be passed by April the 1st. In her conversation with us, she stated that there was, there was a budget law that automatically triggers the state to intercede if the budget wasn't passed. And so, we could do this two ways. We could not pass it and allow that, that budget law to take place and automatically trigger the states, the state to intervene. That is what we were told in the meeting that Senator, that the Senator put together for us. And Councilwoman Vaughn was invited to that meeting. And here's a couple of the statutes pertaining to DCA and, and the final, and them having the final say in if we don't move forward with this budget. Mr. Collin, can you just read some of this off for the public? And then, Mr. Bridges, you can chime in on that.
Mr. Collin, you're on mute.
Thank you, ma'am. First, Council President asked me to put up some, some state statutes. First one she asked me to put up is 48-4-79 Certification of the Director. It reads 48-4-79 Certification of the Director Immediately After Making His Examination of the Budget, the Director shall certify the results of his determination to the governing body. A governing body shall not finally adopt the budget until a certification by the Director has been received. The next one is Orders of the Director Binding. Final order of the Director shall be binding upon, this is 48-4-84, final order of the Director shall be binding upon the governing body and shall be complied with. Spirit Court may enforce the order in an action instituted by the Director. If the governing body fails or refuses to comply with the final order of the Director, the members of a governing body who willfully fail or refuse to comply shall each be subject to a personal penalty of $25 for each day after date fixed. The final action that failure or refuse to comply continues. The amount of the penalty may be recovered by the Director in the name of the State as a personal debt of the member of the governing body and shall be paid upon receipt into the State Treasury. Next is the actions by the Director. This is 48-4-3.5. The Director of the Division of Local Government Services and the Department of Community Affairs shall take such action as the Director deems necessary and consistent with the intent of public, with the intent of Public Law 2008, Chapter 92, to implement provisions. And I believe those are the four sections you asked me for, madam. I did. I don't know if I lost or not.
Yes. And I would like for Mr. Bridges to expound on those four statutes.
Mr. Bridges, where do you want to start?
We can start at any of them. I, I appreciate the question, but I mean, they, they, they say what they say. There's, there's penalties if certain action is not taken, certification isn't had by a certain period of time. And, and the actions go anywhere from, from penalties, monetary penalties for members all the way up until whatever actions they deem or penalties they deem appropriate. So, I mean, it's, it spells it out pretty much in plain English right there what the statutes say.
Okay. So, Mr., 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 Mr. Collin, I would like to, to take this time to move forward with the, with the resolutions that are in front of us based on the, based on the budget.
I have a motion by Council President McBride to close the public hearing for the amendment and adoption of the 2021 fiscal budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Blakely. I'll call the roll to close the public hearing. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison, have you arrived, sir?
Yes.
You have arrived, sir. Good, good to see you, sir. I'll mark you as here. Mr. Harrison, this is to close the, the, the public hearing on the budget.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
All are in favor of closing the public hearing? The public hearing is closed. We'll now remove to the rest of the agenda. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, I would.
Yes, ma'am. First night on the docket, there are 45 communications petitions received by the clerk's office noted on the docket. There are no minutes. The next set of minutes will be presented for the April 15th meeting. There are no ordinances for a public hearing. And there are no reports of the clerk's office. Financial report will be at the next meeting. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Ma'am, the consent agenda, if the council wished to have that budget amendment read into the record, I'd be happy to do so.
Yes, it needs to be read into the record.
So, we can either pull that or pass it and still read it into the record. It's up to you, ma'am.
I need that read into the record.
Okay. So, we can still read it into the record. So, we will, do you want that removed from the consent agenda and pulled, ma'am? The 105?
Yes, take it out of the consent agenda. Go ahead with the consent agenda and let this be read into the record.
Okay. So, I'm going to pull 105 through the clerk's office. The other items are 090105, I'm sorry, 090107111. Do any of the members of the council wish to pull any of those items out of the consent agenda? That being said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council President McBride. I will call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Before we go to the adoption of the budget, we're going to go in order here. We do have some resolutions that will have to be adopted before the budget, but we're just going to go, they are listed in an item in the docket. So, we'll just go through the docket with your permission, Council President. First, we have Resolution 21-113, a resolution endorsing the enactment of Assembly Bill 8711. of Assembly Bill A seven one one, the New Jersey Reparations Task Force Act. Task Force Act, this is jointly sponsored by Councilman Rodriguez, Councilwoman Vaughn, and Councilman Blakely. Uh, did anyone want this read into the record?
Yes, please.
Councilwoman, uh, Vaughn is calling for it to be read in the record, I will read one thirteen into the record. Bear with me for a second, and I will bring it down. Uh, this is resolution twenty-one dash one one three, a resolution endorsing the enactment of Assembly Bill A seven one one, the New Jersey Reparations Task Force Act. Whereas Trenton is multicultural and diverse city, which is home to tens of thousands of African Americans who make up more than forty-nine percent of the city's population. And whereas from sixteen nineteen to eighteen sixty-five, approximately four million Africans and their descendants under the practice that was constitutionally and statutorily sanctioned were enslaved in the United States and the colonies that became the United States. And whereas an overwhelming body of scholarship, legal community, and evidentiary documentation in the modern-day lived experiences of the descendants of enslaved Africans form the basis for inquiry into the ongoing effects of the institution of slavery and its legacy of persistent systemic structures of discrimination, discrimination on living black people in communities in the United States. And whereas slavery took root very deeply in New Jersey. In the early seventeenth century, the first enslaved African people arrived in New Netherland, a Dutch settlement established in the mid-Atlantic, which included portions of present-day New Jersey. As the demand for labor increased, the number of enslaved African people imported to the New Jersey increased, with Bergen County becoming the largest slaveholding county in the province of New Jersey. In seventeen oh four, the province of New Jersey introduced the Slave Code, which prohibited enslaved Africans and free Africans from owning property and made certain actions like
You won't wait till I come back to help submit that?
Okay, hold on, uh, we're gonna have to mute, my apologies, I'm gonna start again. Whereas slavery took root very deeply in New Jersey. In the early seventeenth century, the first enslaved African people arrived in New Netherland, a Dutch settlement established in the mid-Atlantic, which included portions of present-day New Jersey. As the demand for labor increased, the number of enslaved African people imported to New Jersey increased, with Bergen County becoming the largest slaveholding county in the province of New Jersey. In seventeen oh four, the province of New Jersey introduced the Slave Code, which prohibited enslaved Africans and free Africans from owning property and made certain actions like staying out past curfew illegal for black people. Although New Jersey outlawed the importation of enslaved Africans in seventeen eighty-six and enacted a law in eighteen, abolished slavery, gradually, the state legislature passed peace resolutions in eighteen sixty-three, denying President Lincoln's power to emancipate slaves and later voted against the thirteenth amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas in eighteen forty-four, New Jersey also restricted access to the ballot box by denying the vote to people with criminal convictions the same year it restricted voting to white men, the first northern state to do so. And whereas New Jersey's deep roots in American slavery and its vestiges have endured to the present day. A direct line can be traced from New Jersey's role in American slavery to its system today of voter suppression, racial wealth disparities, mass incarceration, racial segregation, and crumbling infrastructure in black communities in New Jersey, such as the current elevated lead levels in water and homes. And, ladies and gentlemen, please keep yourselves muted, uh, during this. Uh, if IT can help find that party and mute them, please. Whereas, to address these systemic challenges in New Jersey, the New Jersey Reparations Task Force will research, write, and publish a report that will make the case for state-based reparations in New Jersey and outline policy recommendations that seek to repair the harm that has resulted from America's original sin in the Garden State. And whereas the legacy of slavery has given rise to systemic and persistent racism which still pervades American society and has resulted in inequities in access to democracy, infrastructure, youth, justice, housing, and racial wealth gaps, racial segregation, the effects of which are still felt and endured by African Americans and Trentonians to this day.
Can someone please mute themselves?
Whereas, the legacy of slavery, excuse me, now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Trenton, this body fully endorses the enactment of the New Jersey Reparations Task Force Act. Be it further resolved, that the municipal clerk is hereby directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the New Jersey Assembly and the New Jersey Senate, including Trenton's local representatives of those bodies. Uh, I have a, uh, motion, uh, by Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, co-sponsored by, uh, Council Members Vaughn and Council Members Blakely. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, ma'am, you are a co-sponsor, I can get another second.
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson, I will now take the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Go on. Council President, next we have resolution twenty-one dash one one five, a resolution requiring members of the Trenton American Rescue Plan Advisory Committee onboard to execute conflict of interest and non-disclosure confidentiality agreements. The floor is open.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, can the administration explain their position? I mean, I agree with the spirit of this, of this, um, you know, piece of legislation, uh, but I'm concerned about the clause that bans, uh, people who, bans the organizations that people may have served on the boards of from receiving funds. Um, and so can we have some, uh, explanation of your position on this? And, you know, I'd like to hear it, since it deals with a mayoral advisory board.
Mr. Bridges?
Um, Councilman Blakely, um, I, I would say with respect to the, the legality of this for which I sign off on, it, it is a legal request, but with respect to the, um, terms of it, it does make it, um, somewhat difficult for anybody that's serving on any boards or any not-for-profit organizations or, um, uh, any entities that will want to participate in or maybe take advantage of these funds. So, you know, without going into specific boards, um, there's many throughout the city. And, and number three, um, may make it very difficult, quite frankly, to get a board because it, folks will be concerned that, um, any not-for-profits, any organizations that they serve on, anything, uh, may not be able to take advantage of not only these funds, but, but have interactions with the city. So, from a legality standpoint, it, it's, it's a legal request, but from the actual impact it may have, it, it may, it may be a bridge a little bit too far, but, you know, I leave that to the council's consideration with respect to whether or not they believe, um, you know, the, the depth of this, um, confidentiality, non-disclosure agreement, um, i- is problematic, but from a legality standpoint, it's fine. So, let me ask a question. Does the administration have a list of organizations, uh, that would be impacted? A city organizations that would be impacted by, uh, this ordinance? That would be really helpful to know, so that we can understand the scope of, uh, you know, what this could actually address? Um, I, I, I would gather to say the answer is no, um, but, um, you know, I'm sure as you can imagine, there's, there's hundreds of organizations. Does the administration have a list of these companies? Could they potentially gather one? Yes, um, but. And, and one, one of the, one of the other problems, if I may also say, Councilman, and if it dovetails into their question is, you know, really, quite frankly, um, it, all of these actions are a bit premature at this time, everything, in, in, including, um, you know, uh, the, the, the committee or, or group having any in-depth, robust, robust conversations. We don't know the parameters of these funds yet from the federal government. And unless and until we know what those parameters are, anything, either that the, the mayor or the administration may be, uh, looking to do and/or council may be thinking to do on there and with respect to this, is really premature because these decisions are gonna be made by the regulations when they come down. So, again, if you're asking me the question, is this resolution, uh, legal in terms of what it's asking? Yes, it is. In terms of the impact, no one knows, as we sit here today, what is really gonna happen with these funds or how we're really gonna be able to use it, until we get clear indication from the federal government how, how, and, uh, the proper way to use it.
Okay, thank you.
Council, um, Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes, um, I, you know, I, I, I believe in the spirit of this resolution, but I would suggest, because I understand that the mayor is gonna be having a meeting regarding the, the funding coming in, and I think that council is pushing to have more input, and I think that this resolution, um, on, on its face right now, I just don't think it's appropriate to put it forward at this time. That's just my opinion.
Uh, Council President McBride?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson. Um, excuse me, I apologize, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Okay, well, you know, it's, it's, it's very interesting how my fellow colleagues say that, and the law director said this is premature, considering the mayor has prematurely, uh, put a press release out and actually identified his elected members for the, for the committee. So, and ironically enough, no one has gone out to the mayor. The law department represents the mayor, council, and heads the departments of the city. So, I would like to know whether Mr. Bridges cautioned the mayor of actually forming a committee and announcing it without even, uh, conferring with the entire council body. Because I didn't know about the formation of the committee until I read it in the press. So that is how the mayor does business as the leader of this city. Okay, and I, and I, and I'm speaking for myself. I don't know about any other council members, but I had no idea that the mayor was forming a committee, uh, around the American Rescue Plan Act funds from the federal government. Now, as far as the resolution that I put forward, it is, uh, uh, it, it's, it's showing due diligence. It's putting the best foot forward to minimize the risk. If we're gonna have a committee, which I don't understand why we need a committee, because it's, it's seventy-three point eight million dollars. However, any funds that come from the federal government, this is not the first time we got funds, uh, appropriated to the City of Trenton by the federal government, and a, and a committee was not formed. You don't need a committee, the, the truth be told, because we are the elected council. We are the, um, the stewards of taxpayer dollars and assets. We have a fiduciary responsibility to provide oversight and vote on and allocate and have a say in how all funds received and, 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 um, and, uh, and, uh, produce for the City of Trenton. Um, we have a say in all of it. When CDBG grant funding comes in, same thing from the federal government. Uh, we, we, there's no, there aren't committees formed. When the CARES Act funding came in, there was, the mayor didn't form a committee. The mayor went and, and chose which organizations he was gonna allocate that funding to, and he presented the council, and that's the process. We don't need some board to be the intermediary between the council and the mayor. And this is all what this is. In my opinion, it's very clear that the mayor chooses not to work with the council of the City of Trenton that was elected as the fiduciary, has the fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to oversee any type of funding that comes into the city and determine how that money is to be allocated and used. So, I don't know who these people are on this committee, and the council does, I mean, I don't, I believe half of us know. Some of the people on the committee aren't even, don't even live in Trenton. So, um, and the residents have not, have not vetted them. They have not submitted resumes to this council. So, uh, it's very concerning that this is where we are with this mayor. Um, and I just wanna speak to the, the heart of what this proposes. If you choose to be on the board, and it's, it's not just any, it's any board, uh, where you're talking about allocating money, any organization wanna make sure that folks who are having a decision-making role in their organization are free of conflicts and that they're there for the best interest of that organization and not any other outside, uh, organization. And it's the prudent thing to do to make sure the ten members that the mayor has appointed or selected have no outside interest, other than the interest to protect, uh, to put their best forward, their best foot forward to ensure that the monies that they're making a decision on and have an input around and how it's gonna be spent is for the benefit, solely for the benefit of Trentonians. Not for a board that they sit on outside that has historically been a recipient, have received funds from the City of Trenton, and then that same board is gonna send a member to sit on the board where they are a beneficiary and at the same time, a recipient of funds from the City of Trenton. You can't be a beneficiary and have access to the board and then be a recipient organization that has gotten funds from the City of Trenton. Who's to say that you're not gonna appropriate funds, uh, in your, in, in that organization's favor? And we're not saying you can't be on the board, that's, this is not what this says. It says that you're gonna have to disclose that you're, that all the boards that you have been affiliated with, and whether, and whether or not those boards have received funds from the City of Trenton. And, and, and that's what the gist of this is. And if we're not interested in knowing and vetting people who are gonna come into our city and, and, and determine how money is spent, taxpayer dollars are spent, then shame on every single one of my council members. Shame on you that you're gonna allow somebody to take your role and, 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 and come and decide what, what, what to do with our money, our funding, how, how it's gonna be spent, and to whom, without even concern whether or not there's a conflict in there and whether or not they're personally benefiting from it. Pushing money to their relative, pushing money to another organization that they have ownership in or, or, or principle in. If you're a principal owner of another organization nonprofit and you have received funds from Trenton in the past or currently, you don't need to be on this board determining who should get the funds. Because yes, I believe you will be there to ensure that your interests are first and foremost, first and foremost, and you will be, um, pushing funds to your respective organization where you also sit on a board in a fiduciary and governing, um, um, role. So, um, that's what that, this, this, this conflict of interest and non-disclosure and confidentiality agreement is for. And secondly, uh, the mayor had one of our council members on the board. Now, that's not a conflict. Any councilman, and any council member who serves on this board need to recuse themselves from any resolution that, that, that is put forward to, um, to, uh, to allocate funds. You can't sit there and, and, and allocate funds, uh, to, uh, an organization and then sit on the council and then go vote with that same organization that you've already, uh, agreed, um, in another forum to give funds to. I mean, that's just unacceptable, and that is a definition of corruption, okay? And, and if folks wanna know what corruption is. So we, so it appears that folks need to, uh, have a, a class in ethics, ethics on, on his, on his council. So, um, uh, so I, I'm gonna just, uh, uh, yield my time and, um, and I hope that my council members support this. This is, this is, this is necessary, but, um, I, 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 I leave it to, uh, the, the other, um, I'm only one seven, one seven of a council, so I, I leave it to the other six members to decide whether or not they deem this is prudent and, 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 uh, necessary. Thank you.
Council President, point of clarification, I withdrew my name from that.
Council, um, Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me continue.
Uh, would you like me to proceed to the vote, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, uh, you're introducing?
Yes, uh, so moved.
I have an introduction by Councilmember Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second?
I have a second for Councilmember Rodriguez, I'll now call the roll, Mr. Blakely. Ms. Blakely, this is the vote on resolution twenty-one dash one one five, a resolution requiring members of the Trenton American Rescue Plan Advisor Committee aboard to execute conflict of interest and non-disclosure confidentiality agreements. Your vote, sir?
You can come back to me.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
No.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson votes no, Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no, Mr. Michelle? Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Council President McBride?
Go back to Mr. Blakely, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely, sir.
Abstain.
Mr. Blakely abstains. Council President McBride?
Yes.
Council President McBride votes yes. One, two, three. Unfortunately, it fails. Three, the three with one abstention. Actually, we have Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-six, a resolution requiring the mayor to appear before the Trenton City Council pursuant to Trenton City Code Section two dash one C. This is a walk-on. I'd like to read it into the record, ma'am.
Would you please?
Yes, ma'am. This is, once again, Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-six. Uh, this is a resolution requiring the mayor to appear before the Trenton City Council pursuant to Trenton City Code Section two dash one C. Whereas under Section two dash one C of the Trenton City Code, the city council has the power to require any city officer to prepare and submit statements regarding his or her official duties and the forms thereof, and where the city council is requiring the mayor to appear as head of the office of the mayor to detail a report to the city council regarding the appropriation received by the city of Trenton through the American Rescue Plan Act and the formation of an advisory committee for the appropriation of those funds. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Trenton that the mayor is required to appear on Thursday, April fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, before the city council pursuant to Section two dash one C of the Trenton City Code, and be further advised that the mayor will present a report detailing the plan for the formation of an advisory committee for the appropriation of the funds received through the American Rescue Plan. Do I have a, this is Council President McBride's introduction. Council President, do you wish to introduce?
So moved.
I have an introduction by Council President McBride. Do I have a second? I have a second for Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-six. Uh, council, you know, council member wishes to second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. I'll now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes yes. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson votes yes. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, do you vote, sir? I'll come back to Councilmember Harrison. Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez votes yes. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Uh, Councilman Harrison, are you there, sir? Uh, I do not see Councilman Harrison as a part of the meeting anymore. He may have, we may have lost him. Councilman Harrison? Let me see if I can send him an invite to rejoin. Councilman Harrison, are you still with us, sir?
You don't have one-one-six up on the screen, you have one-one-five.
Yes, ma'am. I'll put one-one-six up for you.
And you didn't open it up for conversation after you got your second most, after you got your second from Councilman Blakely?
Uh, we actually can, even though it's unusual for the vote. If you wanted to discuss this, ma'am, we could.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the public know what it was about.
Yes, ma'am, please. And I'll try to get in touch with Mr. Harrison while you're.
Yes. Continue.
Oh, there's Mr. Harrison.
Yeah, the call dropped out. It's all back in.
Uh, this is a vote on Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-six. This is a resolution requiring the mayor to appear before the Trenton City Council pursuant to Trenton City Code Section two dash one C. Uh, the votes are so far, Mr. Blakely, I have Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, uh, Mr. Michelle, no. Mr. Rodriguez, yes.
Wait, what was I getting? I didn't hear that.
Uh, the votes so far, Mr. Blakely, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, yes. I'm getting some feedback. Thank you, Mr. Blakely. Uh, Mr. Harrison would be your vote. Mr. Michelle voted no. Mr. Rodriguez voted yes. Ms. Vaughn voted yes. Uh, the vote is to you, sir. But the floor is open briefly. Mr. Harrison votes no. Council President, you indicated you wanted to open up the floor.
I wanna vote, yes, I wanna, um, do I do that before my?
Uh, it'd be best to open up the floor and let other council members speak as well as yourself before the final vote.
Okay, so the reason that I put this resolution up is because there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of, uh, behind-the-scenes conversations going on about, about the seventy-three million in the rescue plan. So, I thought that it would be best for the mayor to come before the body and have a conversation with the body and with the public to talk about the actual American Rescue Plan and the committee. And I believe that the mayor and, uh, Caldwell-Wilson and Vaughn will be meeting on Monday to discuss this committee and how it is to move forward, and I thought that we should put the resolution forward so it will be in place. And after we had that conversation that is gonna take place on Monday, then the mayor will have an opportunity to come to the public and have a discussion about how to move forward, uh, either with the committee or without the committee, but we will be talking about the American Rescue Plan.
President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead.
I have a question. I made a mistake, and is it possible for us to reconsider President, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn's ordinance dealing with, or the resolution dealing with the rules around the, um, the, um?
Well, it failed, and so now I would have to seek legal advice as to how we handle that. But we are not, let us finish this out first, Mr. Blakely, and then we'll go back to get some answers for that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Um, and so that is the reason why this resolution has been put forward. And my vote for this resolution is yes.
Council President McBride votes yes. Council President, did you want to open the floor up to any of the council members to make a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Definitely.
Go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
Well, um, I voted yes for this because I am an advocate for transparency. Um, the mayor seems to, is hell-bent on not working with this council for whatever the reason. And, um, the fact that we even have to raise a resolution for him to, I know there is a procedure that the mayor has to be invited into council to, um, to speak, uh, because the council meeting is, of course, ran and owned by the chair and the council president. Um, and the mayor has no purview over the governing body, which is the city council. So, understood. However, um, if we had a working relationship with Mayor Gus Yor, uh, some of the events that have transpired over the past couple of weeks around the American Rescue Act would have never occurred. Uh, for a mayor to go out and put a press release and appoint, actually appoint a board and publish it via a press release, um, it's just, it's just, it's just, it's an outrage. From the, from the very beginning, the mayor should have just made an announcement to the city that we have received funds from our federal government, um, to help an inner city like Trenton that has been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, uh, you know, high unemployment, uh, a lot of the ills that inner cities have. That's why if you look around, if you go to the U.S. Department of Treasury website, you'll see that all American cities have got a huge infusion. The federal government is making a huge investment in American cities where there is a high population of black and brown people, uh, which have, um, have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Um, and these funds are gonna serve as a way to, uh, give us, uh, an infusion to our economic development and other things that have suffered because of, um, of the pandemic and some other, uh, issues over historically. But nonetheless, I think if this is what we have to do, and this is the way we have to function in the city of Trenton, we only have maybe a little under two years to serve in our terms, um, this is, this is really, really sad, um, how Mayor Gus Yor chooses to run the city and how he goes about the business of the city and the exclusion of the Trenton City Council. Uh, but nonetheless, um, hopefully he'll show up. Um, uh, he didn't see fit to give the public a budget plan. He made an excuse that he had technical difficulty over at the high school and never rescheduled the, uh, the presentation of the city's budget. And that went unchallenged, and no pressure was put on him to do otherwise. So, I, you know, I have low expectation, Council President McBride, uh, who is introducing this, but I absolutely support it. Um, I think the public needs to hear from him. Um, he doesn't give presentations to the public. He doesn't give town halls. He, and he does, uh, press releases, and he sends emails out to a certain population of citizens that live in his neighborhood. He doesn't communicate to the entire city and the forty-two districts that, uh, forty-six districts that are across the city of Trenton, only one district, and that's the neighborhood of Hiltonia. And that's unfortunate. The mayor is the mayor of all the entire city. Everybody should get the same message at the same time. There should not be a bias toward one neighborhood over the other. And that's, and that's how Mayor Gus Yor is operating, and it's very unfortunate. And, um, but nonetheless, let's see what we can get out of this. Um, hopefully it's productive, and hopefully we can move forward in the most productive manner, in efficient and effective manner, and, um, ensuring that this funding gets properly invested in the city of Trenton and that not a dime leaves its borders. Thanks, Council President. My vote will be yes on this. It was yes. It was yes.
The vote, the final vote was actually five to two, uh, with no abstentions, and the resolution was adopted. Council President, did you want to hear from anybody else? Any other members wish to be heard?
Yeah, we wanted to hear from Mr. Blakely. Yes, Mr.?
Uh, this is for one-one-six. I have the information Mr. Blakely needs for the prior after we're finished with this.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Harrison, Councilman Harrison?
My question is, Council President, you said something about a behind-the-door. What does that mean? Were you implied that? What does that actually mean?
Mr. Harrison, my resolution speaks for itself. I said that there will be, that we would be talking in a meeting, um, on Monday, and then we will bring, present whatever we spoke to, and the decisions that will have been made in that meeting will be made public, and I would hope that the mayor would come out and talk about the American Rescue Plan to not just the remainder of the council, but also to the public. I think that it's very important that the public hears the mayor's point of view and understand how we're gonna move forward with the American Rescue Plan, and that's as simple as I can get that.
Right, but you stated that behind the door. What did that mean? Imply something else is going on. That's why I'm asking that. What does that mean?
Well, I'm stating to you, and let me be very clear to you, Mr. Councilman Harrison, I would like for the mayor to come to the council and to the public and let us have a discussion about the American Rescue Plan Act. I can't be any clearer than that because I think that the public should know how we're going to move forward as is, as should the rest of the council, and that's the bottom line.
I understand what you're saying. You just put what you said that it doesn't make sense, but then again, some of my colleagues have said about the FBI raiding City Hall, but that never happened either. Thank you.
Mr. Conlon, can you, may you continue, please?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're gonna go back to Resolution twenty-one-one-five. Ms. Blakely asked for clarification on whether there can be a motion to reconsider. This is technically what it would be. Uh, there'd be two motions that were available. The first would be a motion to reconsider, which can be raised only by those members who are on the prevailing side. So, that would be, uh, and abstentions, and parties who abstained actually cannot vote on that motion pursuant to Roberts rules. So, a motion to reconsider can only be raised, uh, in this matter by, uh, the votes were for nay, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, Mr. Harrison, or Mr. Michelle voted nay. So, only one of those can bring a motion to reconsider for it. Now, a motion to rescind can actually be barred by anybody, but that would actually not be, that would not bring it back up on the floor. It'd have almost no bearing or effect, uh, with the exception of perhaps the rule A-three, uh, A-three-sixteen, which bars a resolution from being run for a year. So, if you rescinded it, you could actually rerun this technically, uh, but it wouldn't be able to be reconsidered tonight. So, that being said, according to Roberts rules again, once again, the motion to rescind can only be raised by a member of the prevailing side. The nays had it in this case because it was a three-three, a tie vote fails with one abstention, and abstention cannot raise a motion to rescind, or I'm sorry, a motion to reconsider. A motion to rescind can actually be raised by anybody. That would actually allow this to be rerun. But that would have to be won by a majority vote on the floor to rescind the prior decision of the council. That being said, do any of the members who voted nay wish to entertain a motion to reconsider? Uh, that would be Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, Mr. Harrison, or Councilman Michelle. Uh, do any of the members wish to, to forward a motion to rescind? Ladies and gentlemen, council?
I'd do a motion to rescind.
Okay, uh, there's a motion to rescind, uh, the decision on Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-five. Once again, this would not allow for consideration again at tonight's meeting, uh, but according to the rules of A-three-sixteen, it would sort of, it would, uh, not bar a future consideration of this if the motion is successful. Time most by Mr. Blakely to rescind the decision on Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-five. Do I have a second?
Second?
I have a second by Mr. Rodriguez. I'll now call the roll. This is solely for the motion to rescind the decision on one-one-five. I want to call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Blakely votes yes to rescind the decision. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
We're rescinding the resolution?
This is a vote to rescind the decision of the council on Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-five.
No.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson votes no. Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no. Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Council President McBride?
Yes.
Council President votes yes?
Point of information, point of information. Is it possible for, uh, the person who authored this ordinance to walk this ordinance that was just rescinded back on this evening?
No, once again, the motion to rescind does not allow reconsideration at the same meeting. They would have to present it at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, so the vote on, uh, twenty-one dash one-one-five actually is rescinded, so the resolution technically does not fail. The resolution will be marked up, uh, to show the failure of the initial vote and then that the, uh, that was then rescinded by council. Uh, but once again, that would allow it to be walked on or presented for a docket at a later date without the one-year preclusion, but it does not allow presentation at tonight's meeting. Council President, would you proceed?
Yes, please.
Uh, Ms. Blakely, did you have another question, sir?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Very good, sir. So, let me just mark this, uh, real quick. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I just had to make my notes so I can make the record, uh, later on. Uh, this is a motion to rescind decision on failure of Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-six. So, once again, for the record, Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-six, I'm sorry, Resolution twenty-one dash one-one-five failed by a vote of three to one. Council has voted by a vote of four to three to rescind that decision. Uh, it is eligible for consideration at a future meeting without the one-year ban. Council President, would you like me to proceed down the docket? Council President, would you like me to proceed down the docket?
Please.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-one-four. Resolution twenty-one-dash-four is Resolution authorizing to utilize the three-year average method in computing the reserve for uncollected taxes for the city of Trenton. Do I have a motion?
No, what, what resolution?
Uh, this is motion, this is Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-one-four, ma'am. Uh, Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-on-five was bold. And so was, uh, Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-one-six. So the next item on the docket would be Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-one-four, which once again is Resolution authorizing to, to utilize the three-year average method in computing the reserve for uncollected taxes for the city of Trenton. A motion by Council Vice President Paula Wilson, thank you. Miss Harris, that you, sir?
Second.
I have a second by Mister Harrison. The floor is open. Council President, would you like me to move this vote?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'll now call the roll, Mister Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister, Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Vaughn votes no. Council President McBride?
It's, it's, no.
No.
The eyes have it by a count of five to two. Next, we have, and just, just for the record, this is not the actual adoption of the budget. This is the amendment, and this I'm going to read in the record at the request of Council President McBride. Uh, this is the amendment to the adopted budget. Uh, it is four pages long, so I hope that the, uh, the public bears with me. It'll just take a minute. Uh, so let's read this into the record due to substantial amendments. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-one-seven. This is actually not the adoption of the final budget. This is the amendment, uh, as ordered by the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to the Trenton Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. Uh, Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-one-seven, Resolution to approve the Fiscal Year 2021 Municipal Current Fund Budget Amendments for the city of Trenton, whereas the city of Trenton introduced budget for the fiscal year 2021, was approved on the nineteenth January 2021, whereas the public hearing on said budget, uh, was held on March eighteen, twenty-twenty, was tabled to April first, twenty-twenty, resumed and was concluded on April first, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, whereas it is desired to amend said approved, introduce budget now therefore be resolved by the city of Trenton, county of Mercer, state of New Jersey, that the following amendments to the introduced, approved budget of fiscal year 2021 be made. Uh, there are two columns we're gonna be reading from, but from and to, I'll note each as, uh, necessary. One, current fund general revenues, surplus anticipated from one-six, one-point-six-million, uh, one million six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, item three, miscellaneous revenue, section A, local revenues anticipated utility operating surplus water, three million six-hundred-and-fifty thousand to one-point-one million six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Uh, next, item total, section A, local revenues, miscellaneous revenues, um, local revenues, fourteen million four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-seven-one is the from column. That was adjusted to twelve million four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Next, we have miscellaneous revenue, section B, state aid without off, offsetting appropriations, transitional aid, went from seven million twelve-thousand-five-hundred-thousand to three million seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. CARES Act funds went from zero to two million two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifty-one cents. Miscellaneous revenue, section B, state aid without offset appropriations total, went from seventy-five million nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-sixty dollars to seventy-four million nine-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars and fifteen cents. Miscellaneous revenue, section F, special items, general revenues anticipated without, with prior consent of State Director of LGS, public and private revenues offset with appropriations. State, New Jersey, DHSS Child Health, DHFS nineteen, CHD zero-one-six, uh, to seven-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Strength of local public health capacity to one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. State of N, New Jersey, DHSS Phillips, uh, P-H-I-L-E-P, C-R-I, L-I-N-C-S agencies, twenty-twenty-one, uh, that is one-hundred-and-two-thousand. Fiscal year, U.S. Department of Justice, U.S. Marshal Service, J-Leo, twenty-one-dash-zero-one-zero-six, fifteen thousand. New Jersey DEP Forestry Grant, ten thousand. NJ EPA HD-SRF Polka Fisher, three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. NJ EPA HD-SRF Freight Guards, hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-to-one-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. State Police Opioid Enforcement Task Force, fifteen thousand dollars. Fiscal year Safe Streets Task Force is thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. State of New Jersey DLPS Fiscal Year Twenty-One, State Body Armor Replacement Fund Program.
Sleep, baby?
Excuse me, State of New Jersey, P.S. Fiscal Year Twenty-One, State Body Armor Replacement Fund Program, eighteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. United States Department of Justice Fiscal Year Twelve, Bulletproof Fest, thirty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-One Homicide Task Force, eighty thousand. U.S. Department of Justice Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Program, one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars. U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, ninety-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. DV, RPC, and TCDI redevelopment updates, ninety thousand. NJHD Mercer Cemetery Historic Preservation, fifty thousand. Fiscal Year, U.S. Department of Justice Summer Expansion Program, seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. New Jersey Department, New Jersey Department of Transportation, Protection, and Safety Improvement Project, one-hundred-and-ninety thousand. Fiscal Year Twenty-One Drug Enforcement Demand Reduction Fund, twenty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Two thousand eighteen Recycling Tonnage Grant, fifty-one-thousand-eighty-five dollars fifty-nine cents. Total addition to miscellaneous revenue, section F, special items, general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of Director of LGS, public and private revenues offset with appropriations, went from two million three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and fifty-four-three cents to four million seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Item number three, miscellaneous revenue, section G, special items, general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of the Director of LGS, other special items, sale of city-owned properties, went from two-one, two-point-one million dollars to nine-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Miscellaneous revenue, section C, special items, general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of the Director of the LGS, other special items, went from twenty-five million eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents to twenty-four million six-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Total miscellaneous revenues went from one-hundred-and-nineteen million one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and ninety-three cents to one-hundred-and-seventeen million four-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Next, we have item four, receipts and dividends and taxes, went from twenty-six million three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents to twenty-eight million three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Item five, subtotal general revenues from items one, two, three, and four, went from one-hundred-and-forty-seven million one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars and seventy-six tenths to one-hundred-and-forty-five million seven-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, subitem six-A, local amount to be raised by taxes for local support of the municipal budget, uh, section sub, subsection A, local taxes for municipal purposes, including reserve for uncollected taxes, went from eighty-two million one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents to eighty million fifteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Total taxes are eighty-three million nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars, one-hundred-and-seventy-cents and fifty-nine cents. Uh, sorry, eighty-three million nine-hundred-and-twelve thousand one-hundred-and-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. That is the from to eighty-one million seven-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Total genver, general revenues for the city of Trenton went from two-hundred-and-thirty-one million sixty-two dollars and twenty cents, sixty-two thousand dollars and, sixty-two-thousand-twenty dollars and thirty-five cents to two-hundred-and-twenty-seven million five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dol, four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Current fund appropriations, operations within the caps, mayor's salary and wages, five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. Mayor O and E went from sixty-seven thousand five-hundred to thirty-seven thousand. City council salary and wages went from one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-fifty dollars to one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-fifty dollars. City council operating expenses went from three hu, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Just wanna make sure I read it right. Uh, city council salary and wages, uh, went from one-forty-one-five-hundred-thousand, uh, one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars to one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. City council operating expenses went from one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-fifty dollars to one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-fifty dollars. City clerk salary and wages went from three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and eighty-four cents to two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. City clerk operating expenses went from one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars to seventy-three thousand. Elections fund went from forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, no change, to forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Administration salary and wages went from seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-six dollars and sixty-four cents to six-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Administration operating expenses went from four-hundred-and-forty, fifty-four-thousand-five-hundred dollars to four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Summer youth employment salary and wages went from twelve thousand, no change, to twelve thousand. Summer youth employment operating expenses stayed same at eighty-eight-hundred in each column. Purchasing salary and wages, we went from one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars to one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Purchasing operating expenses went from forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, no change, to forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Uh, uh, MIS salary and wages went from eighty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen, no change, at eighty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen. MIS operating expenses, no change, from one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Personnel salary and wages went from two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-seven-hundred, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars. Uh, insurance salary and wages went from, uh, I'm sorry, personnel operating expenses went from fifteen thousand to seventeen thousand dollars. Insurance salary and wages went from sixty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-nine dollars to fifty-seven thousand. Finance director salary and wages went from sixty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars to one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars. Finance director operating expenses went from seventy-three-thousand-forty-five dollars to three-thousand-forty-five dollars. Accessing control salary and wages went from three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-six dollars and fifty-five cents to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Accounts and control, accounts and control operating expense went from ten, uh, there's no change at ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. Audit OE, uh, operating expense, no change at forty-six thousand. Treasury salary and wages went from one-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and forty-five cents to one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars. Uh, tax collector salary and wa, uh, I'm sorry, that's treasury operating expense went from one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Tax collector salary and wages went from four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-three dollars and eighty-seven cents to four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. The tax collection operating expense went from two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars to one, two, no change, at two-eighty-four-one-fifty. Assessment salary and wages went from four-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents to three-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand. Assessments operating expenses went from twenty-thousand-thirty dollars, no change, at twenty-thousand-thirty dollars. Revaluation operating expenses, sixty-five thousand, no change. Law salary and wages, uh, no change, from one-million-one-hundred-and-four-thousand-nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Law operating expenses increased from one-thir, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to one-mill, I'm sorry, one-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to one-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Health and Human Services salary and wages went to, from four to one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars to three-hundred-thousand. Health and Human Services Director operating expenses, one-hundred-and-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand to forty-three-thousand dollars. Health Promotion and Code Enforcement salary and wages went from six-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars and forty-five cents, increased to eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Environmental Health salary and wages, five-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, uh, no change. Uh, Environment to Health operating expense, thirty-thousand-three-and-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and fifty cents to twenty-two-thousand dollars. Register salary and wages went from two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-one-hundred dollars and sixty-four cents, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. Register operating expenses went from twenty-two thou, no change, at twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-three dollars. Shared Services Contract, uh, two-hundred-thousand, no change, at two-hundred-thousand. Animal Control salary and wages went from four-hundred-and-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, uh, one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and seventy-seven cents to three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. Animal Control operating expense, no change, at one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred. Uh, Office of Adult and Family Services salary and wages went from two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents to ninety-two-thousand dollars. Offices Adult and Family Services operating expense, no change, at one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars. Community Relations and Social Services salary and wages went from five-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents to one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Community Relations and Social Services operating expense went from fifty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents to thirty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, Cease Salary and Wages went from six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars to five-hundred-and-eleven dollars and dollars. Coordinated Entry and Assessment Services operating expenses went to se, from sixty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seven dollars and seventy cents to thirty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seven dollar, seven-hundred-and-seven dollars and seventy cents. Emer Shelter operating expense went from, uh, no change, at two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Public Assistance operating expense, no, uh, a ten-thousand-dollar change from thirty-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars to twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Fire salary and wages, twenty-six million four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and ninety-seven cents to twenty-seven million. Uh, Fire OE went from six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars to, and nine, six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars to seven-hundred-thousand. Emergency Management salary and wages, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, uh, reduced to a hundred thousand. Emergency Management operating expenses reduced from seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred to forty-one-thousand-two-hundred. Trenton Emergency Medical Services operating expenses reduced from one-hundred-and-two-thousand to ninety-two thousand. Trenton Emergency Medical Service operating expenses, thirty-two million six-hundred-and-eight, I'm sorry, that is, that is, my apologies. Emergency Management salary and wages with seventy-one-two-thousand reduced to forty-one-thousand-two-hundred. Emergency Management operating expenses went from one-hundred-and-two-thousand to ninety-two thousand. The Police Department salary and wages went from thirty-two million five-hundred-and-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and forty-eight cents to thirty-one million six-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars even. Crossing Guard salary wages, six-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, reduced to six-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand dollars. Communication salary and wages, uh, went from three million twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents to two-point-six million dollars. Communications operating expenses went from five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Public Works Director salary and wages went from three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and eleven cents to three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. Public Works Director operating expense went from ten-thousand-seven-hundred, stayed the same at ten-thousand-seven-hundred. Solid Waste Management sal, salary and wages went from three million nine-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-four dollars to three-point-four million. Solid Waste Management operating expenses went, uh, no change, at three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-two-hundred. Uh, next was, uh, Streets sal, uh, salary and wages, one million five-hundred-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and fifty-five cents to one million two-point, uh, one million two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and fifty-five cents. Snow Removal, no change, at three-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-eight-hundred. Uh, that is the Snow Removal operating expense, uh, Snow Removal, or, I'm sorry, Streets operating expense is three-one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-eight-hundred, no change. Snow Removal operating expense, no change, at two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand. Public Property Salary and Wages, two million six-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents was reduced to two-point-one million dollars. Traffic and Transportation salary and wages, uh, went from six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents to five-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars. Tractors and Transport, uh, Transportation operating expenses went, uh, no change, at one-hundred-and-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Engineering and Operations salary and wages, one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents, reduced to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. Engineering operating, operating, Engineering and Operations operating expense, uh, fifty-six-thousand-ninety dollars to forty-six-thousand-ninety dollars. Uh, Landfill operating expenses increased from five-point-seven-eight-five million to six-point-two million. Housing and Economic Development Director salary and wages went from two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and twenty-one cents to one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand. Housing and Economic Development Director operating expenses, fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars to twenty thousand. Planning Board operating expenses, no change at seventeen-hundred, uh, no change at sixty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Uh, Rent Stabilization Board operating expenses, no change at seventeen-hundred dollars. Uh, RE Property, Real Estate Property Management salary and wages went from three-hundred-and-fifty, fifty-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents to two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Real Estate Property Management operating expenses went from three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars to one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Landmarks Commission operating expenses, no change at eight-hundred, eighteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Economics Development Sal, Salary and Wages went from two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and forty-one cents to two-hundred-and-two thousand. Economic Development operating expenses went from three-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars to ten-thousand dollars. Planning Board salary and wages went from three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents to two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Planning salary and wages, uh, that is, that, I'm sorry, that was Economic Development operating, Economic Development operating expense is three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand to ten thousand. Uh, Planning Board salary and wages, once again, went from three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents to two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Planning OE went from eighty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Housing Production salary and wages went from two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and two cents to one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Uh, Housing Production operating expense went from thirty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars to twenty-five-thousand dollars. Inspections Director salary and wages went from three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. and thirty-one cents to two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Inspections director operating expense went from twenty-eight thousand twenty dollars to twenty thousand dollars. Technical services salary and wages, uh, went from three hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents to two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Technical services operating expenses went from thirty-five thousand one hundred to twenty thousand. Housing inspection salary and wages went from nine hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents to seven hundred and ninety thousand. Housing inspections operating expense went from twenty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to sixteen thousand. Weights and measures salary and wages went from sixteen thou- thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents to seventy-five dollars. Weights and measures operating expenses went from eighteen hundred, they stayed the same at eighteen hundred dollars. Zoning board operating expense went from sixteen thousand three hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars. Recreation NRC director salary and wages, thirty sev- three hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents was reduced to one hundred and forty-seven thousand. Recreation NRC director operating expense, five hundred and eighty-seven, five thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, no change. Recreation salary and wages, six hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-six cents, reduced to three hundred and thirty thousand. Recreation operating expense, three hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents, reduced to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Summer food, no change at fifty-two thousand dollars. Summer food, also no change, uh, changed from fif- sixty-one thousand to fifty-one thousand. Recreation maintenance, national re- uh, uh, national, uh, resources salary and wages, six hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-nine cents to four hundred and forty-one thousand. Recreation and maintenance, national resource, uh, natural resources operating expenses, uh, went from four hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents to four hundred and sixty-one thousand. Uh, the pool salary and wages went from five hundred and seventy-two thousand, was increased to eight hundred and five thousand. Pool operating expense was, uh, reduced from three hundred and forty thousand six hundred dollars and seventy-four cents to three hundred and forty thousand dollars flat. Division and culture salary and wages went from set fifty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents to fifty-five thousand. Division of culture operating expenses went from twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, reduced to twenty thousand dollars flat. Municipal court salary and wages went from two six, two million six hundred and three thousand forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents to two million one hundred and three thousand dollars. Municipal courts... Operating expense went from six hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred and three dollars and fifty cents to two hundred thousand. Public men, defender salary and wages, uh, was added for fifty-two thousand. Public defender operating expenses added six hundred and fifty-five thousand. Health insurance operating expense, uh, was, uh, is two, twenty-four million eight hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and six dollars and eighty-six cents, uh, that was increased to twenty-five million dollars flat. Other employee benefits went, uh, stayed the same at seventy thousand dollars. Uh, workers' compensation operating expense went from one point one two five million to three point nine seven five million. Occupational health center operating expense went from two hundred and ten thousand, reduced by ten thousand to two hundred thousand. General liability insurance premium stayed the same at one po- or cost stayed the same at one point five one six million. Uh, telephone operating expense was reduced from four hundred and twenty-five thousand to four hundred and fifty thou- four hundred and fifteen thousand. Public service election operating expense went from one, and no change at a hundred and twenty, one million, one million two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, public streets, public service street and traffic light operating expense, no change at one million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. Postage operating expense, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, reduced to two hundred and fifty thousand. Gasoline delivery, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, to, to three hundred and fifty thousand, was reduced, four hundred and seventy-five thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. Diesel fuel delivery was reduced from three hundred and fifteen thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. Heating fuel oil operating expense, uh, was reduced from forty thousand to thirty thousand. Uh... The, uh, the district heating was, uh, reduced from three hundred and forty thousand to three hundred thousand. Fire protection was, uh, reduced from one point two five million to one point one million. Water bills operating expense, uh, went from three hundred and ten thousand dollars to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Code enforcement salary and wages, uh, no change at three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Code enforcement operating expenses, no change at one hundred thousand dollars. Salary adjustment, in addition of one point six five seven million dollars. Total operations within the caps went from one hundred and forty-three million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents to one hundred and forty-two million two hundred and thirteen thousand three, six hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-three cents. Deferred charges, it was in addition of fifty thousand dollars. Disallowed grant, there is no, nothing in, uh, in that line item, oh, I'm sorry. Deferred charges, there is disallowed grant of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, statutory expenditures, Medicare employer share of operating expenses, uh, that went from one point three million to one point two five million. Uh, console PNF pensions, uh, that is pay, uh, police and fire, that is police and fire pensions, addition to thirty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Police and fire retirement system operating expenses, fifteen million six hundred and eighty-three thousand with a nine hundred and five dollars, just increased to fifteen million seven hundred, thirteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Public employee retirement system operating expense went from five million three hundred and two thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars to five million three hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Unemployment, uh, went from three hundred and twenty-five thousand to one hundred and eighty-five thousand. Defined contribution retirement system went from eighty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. Total deferred charges and statutory expenditures, uh, went from twenty-four million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and seven dollars and seventy-six cents, twenty-four million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand seventy dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, H one total general appropriations for municipal purposes within the caps went from a hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars, a hundred and twenty-five cent dollars, excuse me, one hundred and sixty-eight million one hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cents to one hundred and sixty-six million nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and nineteen cents. Operations excluded from the cap, shared services agreements, recycling. Sorry, I'm just having to mute some people. Uh, and ladies and gentlemen, if you could please take the time, if you're on the phone, hit star six to mute yourself, and otherwise you may be muted while I read this into the record, thank you. Uh, operations excluded from the cap, shared services agreement, recycling, uh, went from one point one million to one point two million. Total shared services agreement, agreements went from one million six hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents to one million seven hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Public and private programs offset by revenues. State of New Jersey DHSS Child Health, DH, DFHS nineteen CHD zero one six, uh, was added to seven hundred and ninety-five thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Strengthening of local public health capacity, hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. State of New Jersey DHSS Philip CRI LANS A agencies, twenty twenty-one, hundred and two thousand. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, U.S. Department of Justice, U.S. Marshal Service, Jay Leo, there's twenty-one dash zero one zero six fifteen thousand. NJDEP forestry grant, forestry grant, ten thousand. NJEPA HDs, HD SRF, Pocalla Fisher, three hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. NJEPA HD SRF freight guards, hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. State Police Opioid Enforcement Task Force, fifteen thousand dollars. Fiscal year state's Safe Street Task Force, thirty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. State of New Jersey DLPS fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty-one State Body Armor Replacement Fund Program, eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. United States Department of Justice fiscal year twelve bulletproof vest, uh, is thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one homicide task force, eighty thousand dollars. U.S. Department of Justice Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Program, a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. U.S. Department of Justice Edward Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. DVRPC and TCDI redevelopment updates, ninety thousand dollars. NJHT Mercer Cemetery Historic Preservation, fifty thousand dollars. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one, U.S. Department of Justice Summer Expanse Program, seven thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. Fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one, New Jersey Department of Transportation's Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one Drug Enforcement Demand Reduction Fund, twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Two thousand and eighteen recycling tonnage grant, twenty, uh, fifty-one thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Local match, uh, Mercer County Trent Municipal Alliance Committee Grant, uh, TMAC, twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. NJHT Mercer Cemetery Historic Preservation, sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Fiscal year twenty one, twenty twenty-one Drug Enforcement Demand Reduction Fund, twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Total public and private programs offset by revenues, including match, went from three million one hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-seven cents to five million six hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Total operations excluded from caps went from six million eight hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and two cents to nine million four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Municipal debt service, bond anticipation notes, two hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and one dollars, two hundred and forty-five cents to two hundred and twenty-seven thousand sixty-seven dollars and two cents. Total municipal debt service, twenty-four million nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three thousand and fifty, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-nine cents to twenty-four million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. H two total general appropriation excluded from caps would from forty-five million six hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-four cents to forty-eight million two hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-two cents. Type one school, type one district school debt, school bonded anticipation notes went from thirty-three million nine hundred and fifteen dollars, the, oh, I'm sorry, thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars to thirty-four thousand thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Total type one school district school debt, two million seven hundred and five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, uh, went to two one, two million seven hundred and five thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total general appropriations excluded from the caps are fo- went from forty million three hundred and thirty-five dollars and three hundred and forty-seven cents, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents to fifty million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand seventy-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Item L, total general appropriations, item H one and O, went from two hundred and sixteen million four hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents to two hundred and seventeen million nine hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and eight cents. Uh, item M, reserved for uncollected taxes, was, uh, decreased from fourteen million six hundred and four thousand five hundred and four set, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to nine million five hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Item nine, total general appropriations, two hundred and thirty-one million sixty-two thousand twenty dollars and thirty-five cents, reduced to two hundred and twenty-seven million five hundred and seventeen thousand and four hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Dedicated water utility budget, item ten, dedicated revenues from water utility. Rate ordinance passed in fiscal year twenty twenty for benefit of fiscal year twenty twenty-one was reduced from eight point two million to four point, four million two hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents. Total water utility reserves, fifty-one million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents, reduced to forty-eight million twelve thousand five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-one cents. Appropriations for water utility, operating salary and wages, ten million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-three cents, reduced by five hundred thousand to ten million three hundred and eighty-five dollars, five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-three cents. Other expenses, from twenty-two million one hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents to twenty-one million six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Deferred charges, emergency authorizations before one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents eliminated. Uh, expend- over expenditures, uh, were added in the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Debt service, bond payment on bond principal, uh, went from six million four hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents to five million eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, seven hundred and forty eight, five million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Interest on bonds went from one point, one million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars to eight hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents. The surplus from the general budget, uh, for the War Department was reduced from three million six hundred and fifty thousand to one million six hundred and fifty thousand. The total utility appropriations went from five, fifty-one million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents to forty-eight thousand twelve dollar, forty-eight thousand twelve thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-one cents. Being further resolved, that the two certified copies of this resolution be filed with the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for certification of the municipal budget so amended. The budget amendment will be published in the official newspapers. Uh, it actually will not be published on March thirtieth, but we will publish, uh, this after, so that, uh, just an amendment on the floor to eliminate that item. Uh, so this is for the, uh, the approval of the amendments, uh, for Resolution twenty-one dash one one seven. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Our most, our council vice president is seconded by Mr. Blakely, the floor is open. Council President, Councilman Rodriguez, sir.
Uh, no.
Councilman Rodriguez votes no. Councilmember Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
The, but the amended, uh, the budget amendments are adopted by a vote of five to fifth. Uh, next, Council President, we have the adoption of the, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one municipal budget under Resolution twenty-one dash one one two, uh, this was also a walk-on, um, uh, I'd like to read this into the record. Uh, this is Resolution twenty-one dash one one two, a resolution adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-one municipal budget. Be resolved by the, by the City Council, the City of Trenton County, Mercer, that the budget hearing before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated in the sums therein set forth as appropriations. Item A, eighty million fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents for municipal purposes, and item B, nine hundred and thirty, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents for school purposes, and type one school district only under NJSA eighteen, Cap A, Section nine dash two, to be raised by taxation, and item C, seven hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-four minimum library tax. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, I have a second. Council President, was that you, ma'am?
No, Vice President.
Uh, Council Vice President, I have a second by Council Vice President, the floor is open. Council President, you'd like me to move for the vote?
You go right ahead, right ahead.
Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison.
Yes.
Councilmember Michelle.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
No.
Councilmember Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, five to two, the Trent City Fiscal Year twenty twenty year budget is adopted. Council President, uh, I would like to continue proceeding through the docket. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash one weight, a resolution authorizing the assignment of tax sales certificates pursuant to NJSA fifty four, Section five dash one one three, uh, for thirty-three properties totaling four hundred and four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, this is Resolution twenty-one dash one oh eight. No move. And motion by Councilmember Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Floor is open. Council President, you'd like me to move through the vote? Yes, ma'am, I have an introductory, Mr. Harrison, a second by Mr. Blakely, this is Resolution twenty-one dash one oh eight, resolution authorizing assignment of tax sales certificates pursuant to NJSA fifty-four colon five dash thirteen. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride. Uh, this is, I'm sorry, Council President, I'm trying to do, uh, let me put it up for you, it's twenty-one dash one oh one, one, one oh eight.
Okay, um, yeah, I got it, I got it, n- no.
No. Council President McBride, McBride votes no, the motion carries by vote of four to three. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash one oh nine, a resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of a contract with Delaware Valley Regional Planning Committee to enable the city to receive grant funds to participate in the development and utilization of a region-wide transportation geographic information system program, no match required. So moved. I have motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson, the floor is open.
They move on.
Yes, ma'am, this is Resolution twenty-one dash one oh nine, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes yes, Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson votes yes. Ms. Caldwell Wilson votes yes. Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes aye. Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle votes aye. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes aye. Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Ms. Vaughn votes no. Council President McBride.
Yes.
Council President McBride votes yes. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash oh ninety-eight. A resolution authorizing payment for a contract with the Yaris Landscapes, three fifty-nine Princeton Avenue, Hamilton, New Jersey, oh eight six one nine, which is awarded on an emergency basis for snow plowing services for the Department of Public Works, Division of Streets in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and eight cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson. The floor is open.
You may continue.
Yes, Council President. I have a motion by Councilwoman Harrison, a second by Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson. I now call the roll. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes yes. Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson votes yes. Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes yes. Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle votes yes. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Yes.
Rodriguez votes yes.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Council President McBride.
Yes.
So moved. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash one one zero. This is a resolution accepting visit and awarding contract to Richard J. Barrett, Haven Company, Inc., for road construction located at sixteen twenty-one North Holden Avenue, Uwe Township for a period of one year from April first, twenty twenty-one to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars through bid twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
Yes, um, Council President.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Is, is the gentleman from Uwe Township still on the call? The concerned citizen from Uwe Township?
No, you can't ask, no, 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 no.
No, no, what are you talking about? Ca- Kathy, what do you mean I can't ask?
This is, this is actually for the council, ma'am.
Well, I know this is for the council, however, this is, this is a resolution about Uwe Township. They're doing a, led, uh, um, uh, fixing a road in Uwe Township, the Water Department. And that individual had a, had some concerns about the service level of Trenton Waterworks and, 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 and they're one of our customers. All I wanted really is just that, I, I want Mr. Collins to get that person's phone number, please.
Uh, if that person would contact the clerk's office and you, if you wish uh to provide your telephone number, you can email me at clerk@trentonnj.org. Uh, once again, that is clerk@trentonnj.org uh, for the gentleman who was a concerned citizen from Uwe Township. I don't believe he's actually on the line anymore, ma'am. I don't actually see him anymore.
Okay.
So I, I don't necessarily know I'll be able to get that, but we will try. Um, that being said, I have a motion on the floor for Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson, a second by Mr. Harrison. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Ms. Vaughn, did you have any more comments?
No.
Council President, would you like me to proceed to the vote?
Please.
Uh, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of six to one. Council President, that is all the resolutions on the docket for tonight. Uh, the consent agenda was already passed. Uh, at this point in time, uh, I believe we are up to, uh, public portion? Just check my agenda. Uh, yes, Council President, would you like to open up the floor for public comments? Gentlemen, this is the public comment section of the Trenton City Council meeting. You'll be given ten minutes to speak on, uh, your topic. We ask that A, you do not yell into the microphone. Uh, it distorts the, uh, feedback on the recording. Uh, B, that you show respect to the council and to the employees of the City of Trenton. Does anybody wish to be recognized for the public portion of the Trenton City Council meeting tonight? Council President, we have Ms. Evangeline Ugorgi.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you all very much. Um, I commend you for the time that you take for your civic duties and your capacities as a council uh, buddy for this, yes, our beloved city of Trenton. Um, last week, I missed the opportunity to ask a question that is of concern to me because uh, I am a resident in the city and therefore participant in all the goods and ills therein. And so I sent a letter to the city clerk to uh, help me disperse to the rightful people with their rightful, uh, email addresses insofar as, uh, uh, since I don't use them frequently, I might address wrongly. So my question this evening, uh, is one of a personal nature. Uh, if the respective directors in their departments can please, uh, afford me the benefit of an answer. I was the one who was the neighbor to the six-five-four Adeline Street person with the house and no permits posted for a house that he's been fixing since three thousand, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, I endured all manners of, uh, irregular activity, noise, music, well into the early hours of the morning. Uh, and so I started questioning what was going on over there, uh, uh, through to this maybe towards the holiday last year. I had tried to be a good neighbor and then endured and tolerated all of that until I started asking questions. It took me from, I would say, Thanksgiving of last year to probably January of this year to make any kind of headways in terms of calling and asking the housing inspection department. Um, you know, to, to find out what their procedures are regarding these kinds of things here. Why this gentleman has been at this, uh, issue for three years. No permits posted anywhere, unlike other people that I've noticed all over the city, including up to yesterday out in the Westwood area. While I was visiting some friends, I saw people with all kinds of permits posted on their windows while they were working on a boarded up house that they had just purchased. And I was wondering what was different with this one here. Relative to the noise, um, in light of what, if any, uh, contact I was able to make in the, uh, Housing and, um, Inspection Department. The gentleman who was assigned to this area here in the person of Mr. Ken Bullock uh, at least, uh, gave me the benefit of a phone call back and said to me that all he knows is that the house in question is all boarded up and that, um, he drove by and that he wrote a letter to the owners to board up the door, which was the only thing left. Now, um, this house is, uh, is the house that is the subject of my own home being burglarized way back in two thousand and eleven. And I'm still reliving the trauma of the traffic and the noise and stuff, you know, such as was the case back then. Um, I didn't see anything in the way of any moves for this place to be boarded up in the front door. The noise and the irregular activities continued to the point where I acted on the advice of Mr. Ken Bullock. I wrote to him, I wrote to him, Ms. Yolanda Vasquez. Nobody responded to me but Mr. Bullock. And he said to me, Ms., uh, I called you on a personal phone, uh, after listening to your voice messages or got your email or whatever. Um, this is a public safety matter, call the police. And so I acted on his advice and called the police every time there was all this irregular noise into the wee hours of the morning. Well, in the process of that, I encountered, uh, uh, what I would call hostile treatment and antagonism from the police themselves. Because I had a police officer come here on one occasion who basically took it upon himself to berate me and, and, and chastise me for wasting police resources and, uh, told me all kinds of things up to, and including that I needed counseling and stuff. You know, for my trauma and this and that, and that, uh, this was not a public safety issue. In the midst of all of that, I was told that, uh, there was inspection scheduled for, to give this house a CO. Um, that was, that was postponed between January and February. And the next thing I knew, towards the end of February, I called again to follow up on the status of these events and, uh, what's going on in that house. And I was sold via Oprah request, since I wasn't reaching Mr. Bullock anymore, who had warned me not to call his personal phone number because I couldn't reach him in the office. Ms. Yolanda Vasquez never responded to me, not via phone, not via email. I tried to reach Mr. Bendalaw, his secretary told me this was not in the purvey of their uh, department and basically she was, uh, a gateperson who was, uh, going to see that I did not speak to Mr. Delisle. So I wrote the email questions about specifically, what are the procedures in this kind of cases? How is it that this person, in the midst of all these questions and, uh, notices that were supposed to be given to him, all of a sudden now turns out he has a CO. Portions of this house is still boarded up on the side and upstairs. This house was boarded up not only on the outside, but on the inside. I live next to it, so I do know what's going on, including today. Some of, some portions of this house is still boarded up and there's still work going in, going on in there. And I would like to know what it is that I did wrong in the, to be afforded the kind of treatment that I suffered at the hand of this police officer who came here to berate me and, uh, basically do what I call fanning the flames of, um, neighborly rancor and discord uh, about telling me about I'm wasting police resources because whoever sent him here uh, took a difference of opinion in terms of, uh, what it was that was actually going on and why I had called. And so I, I wanted some answers from the respective departments, Housing and Inspection and, uh, Mr. Bendalaw and the police director because I want to know exactly what a person in my situation is to do because I'm still living with this mess over here.
So, Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Uh, uh, excuse me, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you, um, uh, um, ask, um, when the, um, public finished speaking, before we allow the, um, civic comment, could you have Mr. Uh, Delisle and Mr. Cruz, could they, um, both of them respond to, uh, Mr. Ugori? Because, uh, you know, we don't want our citizens to feel as though there's no recourse in the city. So I would definitely, if we were in the chambers, I would have them um, speak with her. So I want them to speak with her in, in, in public this evening before the civic comment.
Yes, ma'am. I'll, I'll, I'll note the record and, and, uh, Mr. Delisle, are you still here, sir?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, I'll call for you when the time is right. And Mr. Cruz is still here. Uh, Ms. Ugorgi, uh, Ms. Ugori, uh, did you, did you have any further comment, ma'am?
Yes, I just basically wanted to know what are their procedures and how is it that this property now has a CO? Uh, I've been told from the in, uh, uh, I gather from the information that I, I got, since nobody was responding to me and the only one who was responding was saying uh, the number I called was his personal number and therefore to respect his privacy, which I did. I don't blame him for that, but, uh, when I don't get any answers, calling to the offices directly, what is a person to do? So I made some Oprah requests and I asked some pertinent questions. And nothing that I got from Oprah says that anybody in the Housing and the Inspections Department knows what they're doing because, again, instead of addressing the issue, they start to, you know, uh, sweep it under the rug by giving a CO to this house. Now they advised them in the process to remove some of the more obvious boarding, uh, 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 pieces of wood that was put on eleven years ago by the Housing and Inspections Department. So I want to know where is the accountability for all these people within your department, Mr. Delisle? And, and how, I want to know how it is that the so-called CO, according to the Oprah request materials that I got, were given by people who were not supposed to be giving them. I wrote that email and, and Mr. Uh, Conlon, uh, promised me that he disseminated the, uh, uh, email that I wrote to the respective departments and I believe him. So did you get that email? Do you, my questions are outlined there clearly in, in writing.
And they won't respond to you, Ms. Ugori, after all of the
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. And, and Ms. Ugori, you, your time is, your time actually has expired.
Uh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, does anybody else wish to be recognized for public portion of the Trenton City Council? Uh, Council President, we have Mr. Dan Fadden.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Fadden.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to speak to some of the comments that were made earlier about the committee that was formed by the mayor to help inform the distribution of the direct federal aid. And I just think there was some mischaracterizations that were stated and I'm hopeful that when the Gussiora administration comes to council as directed by uh, your resolution this evening, that hopefully some of the confusion can be just addressed. But it's not a board. I think the press release, which even though I don't live in Hiltonia, I received, is quite clear. It's an advisory committee to help inform the administration on the proposals they would bring to council. I actually think this is quite a good thing and it's something we should encourage. When I look at this list of folks, including esteemed people like Brandon McCoy, Elvin Montero, Janine LaRue, Kelly Ingram, all of whom are Trenton residents, by the way. This is a good group of people who've dedicated time in service to many different issues, including in the city, but also beyond and have a good perspective on what would be effective in our community. I want their recommendations. And frankly, I would prefer for these folks to make the decisions over council. But Councilwoman Vaughn is correct. Council has authority over spending. These folks don't get to make the final decision. They're going to help inform the mayor and the administration about what to do with seventy-four million dollars. This is a good thing. Similar to the DVR PC grant that for some reason the Westward Councilwoman voted against, it's a absolutely positive development. You're talking about money that's coming into the city with no match required. So I just want to set the record straight. This is not a board. It's an advisory committee and it's a very good thing for the administration to be looking for advice from residents, from administrative officials like Dr. Amens Lopez, like Maria Richardson, like Dr. Fisher Onatiri. Earlier was offensive. And lastly, I wanted to say, you know, again, we're throwing around the word corruption and corrupt. And it's really basic definition. Dishonest or fraudulent conduct by those in power typically involving bribery. It's a serious accusation that's repeatedly thrown around willy-nilly with no basis in truth. And we've been hearing for years, since this council took office, that something was about to happen. There's nothing nefarious happening here. And if there is, bring some proof. The other definition of corruption is the process by which something, typically a word or expression, is changed from its original use, meaning to one that is regarded as erroneous or debased. That is quite accurate, especially for certain members of council. We are constantly changing the definition, changing the meaning so that it is erroneous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conlon, unmute yourself, please.
It would be better if I unmuted myself. Uh, as I was saying, if you're on a telephone and you wish to unmute yourself to be recognized by council, uh, you would dial star six to unmute yourself. In that case, I had to hit the microphone. Um, so be prepared. Uh, Council President, next we have Ms. Sherri Garrett.
Yes, go right ahead.
Ms. Garrett, you've been recognized.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, um, Council President. Um, I, I I attend these, uh, I tend, I try to be, try to attend these council sessions. Um, what I find that is most annoying by particular people, especially from the public and certain individuals on the council is when they speak and they're chastising. We're all adults here. And it's much annoying when persons get on this, uh, and speak out and make statements about what someone should say and not say and read from a dictionary and, like, clean your own life up. Okay? You know, we all, you know, some of these comments come from people who seem like they live in glass houses and, uh, it's annoying. So I'm asking that if you don't have anything productive to say, you know, this is what this forum is for, for people to come and, you know, uh, question the quality of life. Um, try to bring some order within the community and within the govern, government that governs our community. Um, and this chastising and speaking out and wasting a lot of our time. We all volunteer to be here. We all volunteer, giving the support and based on our observation and assessment. But I think it's really out of line for a number of folks to who probably haven't even lived in Trenton that long, to speak out as if they, this stuff is so correct. The bottom line and the purpose of this way of government is for order. And the process that protects and, 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 and implements the quality of life for everybody who lives in the Trenton, um, borders. So, you know, it's unappreciative. It just, it's enough, it's enough. We're not ki- some of you who are kids in a mindset, who are in adult bodies, who do think like think like children, because when you come out and you talk and you say, make certain statements like you're in a playground someday or where it's inappropriate. This is adult setting and if you have issues with it, I think you should try to look inside yourself and figure out what your problems are. Um, enough of it, you know, enough of it, because it's very, very inappropriate. And if someone has assessment of, especially living in Trenton, has involvement with the government, the city of Trenton's government, um, from the legislators, um, to the administration, that is, uh, their right, who pay taxes and who are, um, uh, voters. So, you know, I really don't appreciate being whipped and beat up by stuff I tolerate, I tolerate, there's a lot of stuff I tolerate and pretty sure all of us tolerate, but enough is enough, uh, enough is enough. Okay? With this about what somebody said and a hotel, saying certain things, is that's their perspective, you have to respect it. If you don't like it, uh, I don't know what you need to do about it, but maybe you ought to look in, because obviously there's some problems within. Come on down. Enough is enough. Because, you know, this is where it got out of hand with, um, Council President McBride, people saying stuff that was inappropriate, shouldn't have been said. Now that, what we should be talking about, but no one yet has said what was said about Councilwoman McBride was inappropriate. But you want to come on this council and, uh, during this session and talk about someone saying something about corruption? Give me a break. Get a life, a live one. Thank you.
Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Council, uh, ladies and gentlemen, if you're on a telephone device, uh, you'd like to be heard from, please speak up now. Any other members of the public wish to be heard for public portion for tonight's April 1st, 2021 council meeting? Second call. Ladies and gentlemen, if this is the last time to speak up, if you'd like to be heard tonight, this is your opportunity to speak during public portion.
I move to close the floor.
I have a motion from Mr. Blakely to close public portion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
I have four all in favors, any opposed? Seeing none opposed, public portion is closed. Council President, you have questions posed by Mr. Yegori, uh, one about the procedures and two, uh, about properties being issued C of O's.
Um, this is, this is Ben Delisle. To the second one, my understanding is, from looking into this, um, the property was inspected and it passed its certificate, uh, or it's, um, what the requirements were, the outstanding violation, so a certificate of housing, um, conformity or the quote-unquote CO was issued for the property. With regard to the work that had been going on without posting, there was about, a bunch of work that was done that did not require permits in the property, things like painting or decorating or sanding the, you know, hardwood floors. Um, this type of work doesn't require permits, so that's why there would not have been permits posted for it. I think, and that was early on during the work, and then I think subsequently some additional work was being done by the property owner, which he then did pull permits for, why it was posted, uh, subsequently.
So, Mr. Delisle, let me ask you a question in reference to this property. I haven't been there, I haven't seen the property, but Ms. Yegori says that the, uh, property is still boarded up. Once a property is finished there, um, their, uh, improvements and they've been given a CO, do the boards have to come off the windows? Is, is the house still allowed to be boarded up as a blighted property?
Well, I, um, my understanding is that the boards were removed or, um, they were told they were going to?
No, no, no. I asked the question. I said, once the work, the improvement has been done in the property and the CO has been given, do the boards have to come down? That is my question to you.
Do the boards have to come down?
Yes, or do it, do it still, do the city still allow the property to be boarded up as if it's blighted?
Um, Councilman, I would, I, I don't know the answer to that question specifically. I'd have to check our, I would have to check our city code if there's a specific requirement to it. I think it's, you would expect it in customary that boards would come off, uh, when the, when the work was done. I can imagine some people would keep them up for security purposes until it is occupied. But, um, I will research that to see if there's anything specific in the city code that speaks to that.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
So, the CO that was issued, so as Ms. Yegorgi stated, um, there were no permits ever posted to the window. When she inquired about the permits, no one would even confirm yea or nay, right? So even if the work requiring, as you stated, Mr. Delisle, did not require permits, then why was that not articulated to Ms. Yegorgi? And furthermore, you said, uh, you're, someone in the Department of Housing Inspection issued a CO. So what was that CO issued in regard to? What type of work was being done that was required a CO? So evidently it wasn't just, um, replacement of a floor, as you stated. So can you, um, inform the council and the public, what's, what, 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 what reason was the CO issued? What, what work was, was it a roof replacement? What was it?
No.
A new air conditioning system? What was it for CO to be issued?
It was a certificate of housing code conformance, so that is, goes to the habitability of a property. It is not a certificate of occupancy issued by the technical division or the building permits. So we use the term CO kind of used inversely, but it was not for physical construction like you're suggesting, like a roof or plumbing or complete gut rehab of the property. It was the things, if it was inspected by the housing division, it'd be things more like paint and missing balustrades or lights that are working, um, just ob, that, you know, the, the holes in the floor, running water, those sorts of things. Just general, just, just general compliance with the housing codes.
Okay, so the CO was issued, so why, Ms. Yegorgi tried to, um, Oprah that document and why was not, why wasn't that not given to her?
The, the documentation that we had was provided.
Now I'm talking about the CO. Now I'm interested in seeing the CO. Can you forward that CO to the clerk office suite and submit it to the council? For, for, uh, what was it? Uh, what address on Adeline Street?
Be happy to provide whatever records we have.
No, 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 no. You said that the office said a legal CO was issued.
An illegal CO?
Whatever CO, you, it was a CO issued to this, to this homeowner, right? So it, that should, somebody in your office had to issue who has the license and the authority to do that, right?
Sure.
So we, we just want to see a copy of it. So what's the receipt, sir, that, of the CO? And who, and who would have done that? Was it, um, Ms. Vasquez or who would have done that?
It, it would have been done by the housing division, yes.
No, who? Who, who was the inspector that went out and said this house gives a pass and deserves a CO?
That could potentially turn into a rice notice issue. We'd probably be better to do that in public.
No, 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 it does not. Mr., first of all, I have a statute by attorney that says the council does not even have to, we don't even have to rice.
Actually, you do, ma'am, but?
No, we do not. No, we do not. Supreme Court of New Jersey ruled that we do not have to rice. It's too burdensome on a legislative body, but I'm not going to argue with you, Mr., Mr., Mr. Collin, you're not supposed to be given legal advice, Mr. Collin.
There is an issue.
Collin, Mr. Collins, you're not supposed to be given legal advice. Now again, again, I want to see the CO.
By which I betrayed?
It's a public document, Mr. Collin, what are you talking about?
No, you, ma'am, you're asking for an employee's name to call an employee.
No, I didn't ask for an employee name.
You asked for, ma'am.
What do you mean? They're director, they issued COs. They service the city. I'm not asking for the employee's performance related to their job. I'm asking for a CO that was issued in a professional capacity. What are you talking about? I'm not, it's not, this is not a human resource en, uh, inquiry. You're out of line, Mr. Collin. Now, Mr. Delisle, I'm going to ask you again. I need that copy of that CO and I want to know who the technician was who signed off on it, period. Did you, did you, Mr. Mr. Delisle?
Yes, Councilman, I'll provide a copy of the CO and, and the documentation that you require.
Okay, no, no, the resident requires it, right? It was issued, a, a professional technician issued a CO that has nothing to do with a human resource issue. So, so even Ms. Yegori knows who, what inspector came out there to the house. So please provide her with that information because it apparent, like I, like I mentioned to you, Mr. Delisle, on Tuesday, that the whole, many people in the community have complained about the department that you oversee. The Housing Economic Development Department is not moving the city forward. You have not put, produced any plans as to any viable economic development here in the city of Trenton since you, since you've been at the helm of the Economic Development Department. And the Housing Inspection Department appears that you have no expertise to oversee that department. And, and, and because of that reason, uh, many people besides Ms. Yegorgi is experiencing what she just described, just pure, uh, negligence and disregard. And your answers here tonight i- i- is an example of, of her experience and, and, and Ms. Yegorgi is telling the truth. That house is boarded up. If your office issued a CO and I, and I want to see it, and that is, that is negligence. And you should be held accountable and that potentially can expose the city to a lawsuit. So I'm not happy with you as the head of the, of the Economic Development Department at all, considering some other things that have been, any other, in other charges that have been brought against you. So, Ms. 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 Uh, President McBride, I will yield my time.
Thank you. Um, we're, Mr. Collin, we're going to go into the, um, civic comment and I will start with Councilman Blakely.
No comment. Enjoy everybody's night. Have a nice night, everyone.
Thank you, Council, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson.
Yes, I, I only have one, um, statement to make. Um, when Councilwoman Vaughn was discussing the Trenton American Rescue Plan Advisory Committee, she alluded to the fact that, that I was unethical. So I'm requesting publicly if she's accusing me of an ethics violation, that she forwarded to the Ethics Board and sent me a copy. Thank you.
Councilman, uh, Councilman Harrison?
Uh, I'm just grateful that we, uh, decided to pass the budget. The, uh, people in this great city don't want a tax increase and I'm for that. So everybody have a great night and, uh, talk to you soon.
Councilman Michelle?
It's Happy Easter, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Councilman Rodriguez? Councilman? Did we lose Councilman Rodriguez?
No, ma'am, I still see him here. He's just been?
I, I have no comments. I was muted.
Um, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, um, I just want to say, uh, quickly that corruption, the definition of corruption is very extensive. And it pretty much, uh, is to summarize it, if you look at the Oxford Dictionary or, um, uh, if you go to the department, the US Department of Justice website and talk about corruption, um, you would find that corruption means when political, uh, elected officials and appointed officials use their office for political gain. And it can mean bribery, but it's not limited to bribery. Okay? So corruption comes in many forms. So, um, so the resident who wants to, uh, restrict it to just one particular activity is totally incorrect. And, um, in, in that definition, uh, again, is when political officials, uh, elected officials and appointed officials use their offices for political, for, 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 for their own benefit and for personal gain. Okay? By choosing their friends and their family and select a group of people, a network to, um, to, uh, to gain access, you know, improperly, for services, for benefits, same old people. It's like a, a rotation of, a, a, a rotating record. Same old people. That's a network of corruption. You shut everybody else out and therefore there will be no growth because of. So in an, in, in, in an environment of corruption, nothing can grow. Not economic development, not, uh, you're not ever going to achieve fiscal, uh, um, a, a, a fiscal, a fiscally healthy economy, not in the corruption, because it's void of competition. Uh, you, you, um, you, you disregard the open, uh, the, the fair and open process for competition, for, for other people to compete for access and opportunity. That's what corruption, uh, 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 that's what corruption is. So, um, and, and of course, the city of Trenton runs rampant in cor, in corruption. If you look at the city of Trenton over the past 10, 15, 20 years, the reason why it has not grown, that we have not economically grown, have not seen economic development, is because of corruption. So much money has come through this city, has flowed through it over the years, grant money. You say why, I don't, I, I didn't approve Mr. Delisle's grant, because Mr. Delisle hasn't done anything with any of the grant money that has come through this city under his, under his helm. So what has he, show me, Mr. Delisle, show, Delisle should show the, the citizens of this city his track record here. What has he done with all the grant money, CDB grant money that has come through the city of Trenton during, during his time in, in, in office here? So, uh, you can look around the city and see the corruption. All this money, now we're looking at 73.8 million that's here. I pray that we can turn it around and, uh, our history is not indic, indication of our future, right, in Trenton? That we, when we get that money, we make it, we invested in Trenton and we don't, and we, and we, we, we don't do what we did with the CARES Act and all the other grant money that has come through Trenton that never gets to the programs and projects and services that they were intended for. So that's corruption. So don't play with me coming in here, coming with some fake definition, acting like, uh, you don't, that, that folks don't know what corruption is. We walk out our doors every day and see that the money that has come through this, the fastest, as it comes in, it goes out. And it's getting to the hands of the people who make the money disappear. They make it disappear. So, so, uh, so that's corruption, folks. And the, one thing I want to follow up on is the planning board. So last week, last Thursday was a planning board and I got so many phone calls from the community and people who attended that meeting, but Mr. Dan Fattin was not in attendance. Okay? So, um, folks were complaining about the Perry Street project.
Meeting, excuse me.
The Perry Street, now why is he interrupting me? Shut him down. So did I interrupt you, sir? No. So, so many people called me personally that the planning board, uh, had a discussion about the Perry Street redevelopment project, the, the, uh, the, uh, market rate, uh, project that we approved here on city council. And the citizens of that neighborhood said that no one ever contacted them, that they did not know what was, there was only one meeting that, that was, uh, facilitated by March Caldwell Wilson, and that was the only meeting about it. And only a few people were able to attend. So there was no community outreach, as they told the council when we voted on it. So, um, uh, so I have those emails and I have held those conversations and, um, and I have spoken to some of the members on the planning board and they concur, they said, Ms. Vaughn, we don't know what information the Economic Development Department gave to the council or why the council would approve that development, but that developer went out there to that community and, and in that planning board with, with, with his attorney and appeared to, um... with, with, with his attorney and appeared to, uh, describe his project other than what was approved on council. And I believe Councilman Harrison was in that meeting. So, so I think the moral of the story here is when council gets, gets information from Mr. Delisle, it appears that it, and some members on council, I mean, it's inaccurate. Folks say they do community outreach and they reached out to the community and the community was aware of the projects. We experienced the same thing with the East Trent Collaborative. You talk to the people in the community, they said no one reached out to them. There were no extensive community meetings. What, one Zoom meeting? If you weren't able to make it, that was it? And then they chalk it up to, they check the box and say, oh, we had, we reached out to the community and the community is aware of the project? Well, that's not community outreach. That's not getting feedback from the community. That's not doing surveys, taking requirements from the community. So that's why I have an issue with Ben Delisle heading up that Economic Development Department, because he's not doing anything to turn the city around in the space of economic development and, and housing inspection. So we have to look at, we got to start, if we're going to do anything successfully with that 73.8 million dollars, we really have to take a good look at the current expertise that we have at City Hall. Can Ben Delisle help with economic development and help us with investing that money and grow this economy here in Trenton? I don't think he's the right person, and I said it, and, and that's the bottom line. And we should go out to recruit someone else. And the other thing that I wanted to just say briefly is that 73.8 million is an investment. And we shouldn't, definitely, the committee is not, is not an approach that I am an advocate of. I, I, I believe that we should reach out to the community. And it's, and it's the community and the residents who should be a part of, of the decision-making. And, and it should be facilitated by the community leaders and provide that input to the mayor's office and into the council. The current people that have been selected on that committee, I, they are on nonprofits. They sit on boards of nonprofit, like the Greater Trenton, that receives, that are, that, that nonprofit is a recipient, a current recipient of grants from the city of Trenton. And now they're going to have a member on the board who's a beneficiary of the seat, of that influence on that, on Regus Yorres Committee. That is a conflict of interest, and that individual should disclose that and, and, and be penalized quarterly. That, or resign from the, of the Greater Trenton Board. But you can't be on the Greater Trenton Board and sit there on, 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 on a committee that is tasked, that potentially will give the Greater Trenton additional funding on that 73.8 million. There's two people on Regus Yorres Advisory Committee that sits on the boards or an advisory committee of the Greater Trenton. And that's Ms. Leroux, and at least that's what the website reports, Ms. Jeanne Leroux and Ms. Doolan, I believe. Both sits on the Greater Trenton Board. Then there's a person who sits on the East Trenton Collaborative Board. Then it's the two people who sit on the nonprofit I Am Trenton Board. And all of those three, those three nonprofits are recipients of grant monies from the city of Trenton. Now they are going to sit on the board to oversee grant money to give to themselves in their own boards? That is preposterous. And as for my colleague, Mark Caldwell-Wolson, I said clearly that a sitting council member should not be on any public boards whereby they have to vote on public funds and direct those funds and then come to council and pass the vote. No. So I did not say that, 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 that I raised an ethics complaint. And where would I raise an ethics complaint to? Our Ethics Board is defunct. We don't have an Ethics Board in the city of Trenton, okay? So we need to get rid of it and just wind it down and just continue to use the state's Ethics Board. Because right now, the, the current Ethics Board in the city of Trenton has not served its role as we all anticipated. So over the past few years, they have not reviewed any cases. And they can't keep membership up enough to have a quorum so that they can render rulings on complaints by residents and, and, and folks in our government. So this council should take a serious look at, at, at returning to ethics reviews at the state level instead of doing, doing it locally. Because the Ethics Board in the city of Trenton is defunct. So, but it's good to hear, Council Vice President, that you, for whatever reason, have removed yourself as a candidate for the mayor advisory on the American Rescue Plan.
Thirty seconds.
But it is, so, but I have no interest in filing a complaint against you. I, I just raised it. I have the concern about anybody who plays a, a double role, who attempts to sit on multiple boards. If you're going to do that, then you should agree to full disclosure and that, and of your conflicts and that you are, and, and just agree that you are going to be sitting there solely for the interests of that particular organization or for the city of Trenton. So that's all I have to say about that. And I will be sending over to the Law Department a legal opinion about the city council, the Supreme Court ruling that says a municipal council does not have to rice any employee of the city or officer if there, if it warrants pause, that we have to investigate them. That would be burdensome on the council to be able to legislate and represent their constituents. So, and, and that's the bottom line. So I'm tired of the city and, and then folks of the administration disrespecting the council and trying to restrict or undermine its authority and, and ability to govern. And it's, and I'm not going to stand for it. So, and that's the bottom line. And so anybody who's been a plan official in this city that this council voted for to represent any function in our government is going to be held accountable, and we're going to expect you to perform and help this city. If you don't want to do that, then you need to just resign or move on to greener pastures where your, where your work will be appreciated. Because it's not appreciated here. You're not going to sit here and collect the paycheck off of our backs and don't deliver anything. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening, joining this council meeting. Your opinion matters to us. I wanted to touch bases on several things this evening, not going to keep you long. I wanted to tell you out of the 21 counties and the 60 cities in the state of New Jersey that Trenton is the last to even approve the amendments for their budget. And that is shameful. I didn't see any of the public coming out when the mayor did not come forward with his budget until he was forced to on January the 19th by the Lieutenant Governor and by the Department of Community Affairs. No one came out to say, where is that budget? I had to go to the Senator to get meetings arranged to force the mayor to come forward with this budget. And then they give us the budget, they run the clock out on us, and we can't go over this budget thoroughly as we should because the council has the budget and we should be able to look at that budget, make our amendments and send it back. We couldn't do that because when the budget came to us, it was, not only was it inflated, but there was, there was no inserts for the CARES money. There was applications that hadn't been filed. Just ineffectiveness, and it made us run the clock to the very last minute. And I also want to talk about the upcoming budget. I want to talk about the fact that when you wait until the 10th hour to turn the budget over to the council, this is what happens, and we can't afford that any longer. The administration is going to have to get that budget to us as soon as possible. We're going to have to get some type of presentation from the Department of Community Affairs in reference to changing the calendar year. We're going to have to talk about the 73 million. That is very important. And I don't know how the meeting is going to turn out on Monday with the mayor. I just respect the fact that the mayor, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolson and Councilwoman Vaughn will be sitting down just to have a conversation about the American Rescue Plan Act. I would like to also talk about the, the housing inspection. Ms. Ugori is not the only person that have been having serious, serious problems with this issue. I had a homeowner on Highland. She had reached out to the administration like three times before she came to me. And once she came to me and lodged a complaint, I reached out to the administration to the proxy that they had given us. When I did that, we got nowhere. The, every time she made a complaint to me and I called the liaison, for some reason or other, the homeowner was approached by the people that was working without a permit to the home. Every time she called me and I called the city, the homeowner knew. When the inspector finally came out to post a sticker on the door, the inspector said to the homeowner that made the complaint, if they come back, call the cops. So she followed the instructions of the inspector. The next thing she knew, she was getting a letter from the courts saying that she was harassing the person that was working without a permit because she made the complaint that they were in there working without a permit. This is all over the city. I'm getting complaints left and right about these inspectors that work for us in the city of Trenton. And Mr. Delisle, it has to stop. No one, no taxpayer homeowner should have to hear people banging hammers and running generators at 3 o'clock in the morning. It shouldn't happen. And when they make a complaint, they're hit with a harassment lawsuit from the municipal courts. That is outrageous. And I want to talk about the Water Department. Whereas we have did and passed so many resolutions pertaining to our Water Department. Councilman Rodriguez, he sponsored an ordinance whereas the director of the Water Department should come in front of us on a quarterly basis and give us a report. We have, that have not happened to this date as I can remember. It doesn't matter how many resolutions we pass trying to put this city into the right direction. They are not upheld by this administration. We have ordinances that we placed on board. I ran an ordinance mandating a Section 3 officer be installed in the Housing and Economic Department. No such officer. They do not uphold any of the ordinances and resolutions that we put forward. And it's very hard to deal with an administration when they overlook the law itself. Because that's what the legislative body do. They enact laws and they pass resolutions to resolve things. I'm telling you, it's not, this is not the way the city should be ran. They should respect the fact that we're passing these resolutions and these ordinances to bring some type of order. And when we pass them and they don't adhere to them and they don't respect them and they don't enforce them, it's a problem. It's a problem across the board. And so a lot of, a lot of the public don't know some of the resolutions and some of the ordinance that we have put forward. But we have, and we continue to do so. I just hope that we are able to sit down and turn this money situation around. I hope that when those 8 million dollars that are outstanding with our Water Department is collected, that that 8 million dollars find its way back into our surplus. I'm hoping that all of the unpaid water bills that the nonprofits have in the city of Trenton, because one time we were looking at millions of dollars that were unpaid by nonprofits. And I hope moving forward that the water company collects that income, that revenue, and it is placed into our surplus. So there are things that they can do, and there are things that we could do to hold them accountable. And we should do that because if we allow that 73 million dollars to go outside of this border, shame on us. Shame on the residents in the city of Trenton and shame on this council and this administration. Again, I would like to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. There's a lot of work to be done in this city. We have to get to the business of the city and stay focused on the business and stay away from the small petty bickering and move to the bigger things. And that bigger piece now is that 73 million. I thank you again for coming out. And I would hope that each and every one of you would enjoy your holiday. If you, you know, if you celebrate Easter, I hope you enjoy your Easter holiday. And for all of you that don't, have a blessed weekend. Mr. Colin, I would move, I'm moving for adjournment.
I have a motion to adjourn by Council President Brad. Do you have a second?
Second?
I have a second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Need one more?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? We are adjourned at 9:56 P.M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming to the Trenton City Council meeting. You can find the documents from tonight's meeting on ECO 360, including the itemized budget and the updates. You can also find the documents, once they are signed and the votes are recorded, at ECO 360 in their final form. I wish you a happy Easter for all of our Christian friends, for those of our Jewish friends, and wish you a belated Happy Passover. Everybody else, please have a very safe weekend. If you're not already home, get home safely and be well. Bye-bye. Don't forget to wear your mask.